We will call our meeting to order. At this time, I would like for you to silence any device that you have that either beeps, or rings, or makes a noise, so that you do not distract those that are around you, or those of us up here. To begin with, we will begin with our pledge of allegiance and our invocation. At this time, if you will please stand. I would like to read a prayer this morning, written by the Archdiocese of Detroit, concerning Memorial Day, if you will allow me to do so. Our Heavenly Father, on this week before Memorial Day, we pray for those who courageously lay down their lives for the cause of freedom. May the example of their sacrifice inspire us in selfless love. Bless the families of our fallen troops, and fill their homes with their lives, and their lives with your strength and your peace. In union with people of goodwill of every nation, embody us to answer the call of work for peace and justice, and thus seeking in to violence and conflict around the world. We pray in thy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As a reminder about Memorial Day, if anybody else in the audience, you know, there is always a traditional Memorial Day up at Gum Creek, starting at eight o'clock in the morning. For those of you who have never been, it's a wonderful ceremony. And I believe there's something planned here at the courthouse, is that correct?
Ten o'clock.
At ten o'clock, here at the courthouse as well. There's one other announcement I'm going to make, and then we will proceed with our agenda. Some of you may not be aware, but Thursday is Red Nose Day. Red Nose Day was started in England to help feed starving children. And as our children get out of school tomorrow, many of the kids in Walton County tomorrow will be their last day. A lot of these kids eat breakfast and lunch at school, and don't have another meal until the next morning. Now that school is out, or gonna be out, some of these children will go hungry. They will be hungry. Red Nose Day, as they say, was started to help provide for children in hunger and poverty. It's a fun way to spend two dollars, get yourself a red nose, and really have, you know, a good time with yourself. I believe if you can't laugh at yourself, then you've got a problem. So, we are going to take a break later on in the meeting, and those of us who want to are gonna wear our red noses and have our pictures taken, showing that Walton County supports fighting childhood hunger. But if you haven't bought your red nose and want one, I bet Walgreens still has them. And it's a wonderful, say, it's a wonderful way to support our children who can't help the fact that they're hungry. So, thank you. We will now get started. Do we have any guests in the audience today? I don't... We have a past commissioner in our presence, Rabbit Miles, so good to have you. Next, I say we will call our meeting to order. Do we want to consider the additions and deletions?
Motion to approve additions and deletions.
We have a motion in a second.
Our commissioners, let me add one more. Our item regarding the contract with Mr. Head needs to be deleted. We don't have a survey back, and we still are negotiating some small terms, so if we go ahead and delete that one as well.
Okay. So, is that included in your motion?
It is.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, at this time, we will have public comment. Now, this is comment on things that are on the agenda. If you have an item that is not on the agenda, then if you will save it to the end of the meeting, we would appreciate it very much. This has, this particular time is for something that is on the agenda.
Are you going to have public comments after certain things are brought up?
Yes, sir. You will be able to comment during that time as well. Seeing none? Okay. And next, we have, are there any items that you want to further delete from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the Waste Management, EAL.
Madam Chair, I acknowledge my conflict of interest, and I have filed a prop form with the clerk.
All right. We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item is to approve the amendments of April the 28th. I am going to have to recuse myself, so I'm passing the gavel to Ms. Jones.
Do we have a motion? Oh, go ahead.
For similar reasons, I have a business conflict on that, I'm also recusing myself on those matters.
Okay. Now, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. That motion carries. Next, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item for your consideration is discussion regarding the planning projects that are in the pipeline, and the potential need for additional BCC meetings to hear those upcoming projects. There have been a number of projects into the Planning Commission. Some have been held over for a couple of meetings, so the pipeline coming to you is beginning to fill up. So, we'd just ask for your consideration of whether you want to continue hearing those as we typically do at the end of a regularly scheduled board meeting, or if you would like to schedule a special meeting, or perhaps two, in order to have the opportunity to try to catch up and get that pipeline cleaned up some.
How many of them are required to be after five o'clock?
All of them.
Just the quasi-judicials, yeah.
Do we know how many that is?
The last, the special, the special meeting we had for the Planning Commission, we had fourteen items, two of which were continued, the other twelve were approved or recommended. But we also had another three that were moved out of the regular meeting, and then there was another set that was continued. So, we're looking at well over twenty items.
And those are all required to be after five o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, the vast majority of those, if not all, but maybe one of those is our QJ items.
Well, just because it's QJ doesn't mean it has to be after five o'clock.
I forget, I'm sorry.
If I'm not mistaken, Commissioner, I think the vast majority of the ones that we're hearing are required to be heard after five o'clock, if I'm not mistaken.
I can't think of any that would not, off the top of my head.
But we've had, as you all know, an increase in activity, and we've got a lot of those that are still coming through the system. The Planning Commission, many times you have a lot of public comments, and those kind of things, so those items can take quite a while. We had one Planning Commission meeting, we had fourteen items on the agenda. At ten thirty, we completed three of those, and that's kind of the backup occurs when you have a controversial item, and so we have that right now. And I think we are looking to see if potentially, instead of staying late at a meeting one night, if we would hold a special meeting, as Mr. Jones has talked about.
If we looked at twenty-first of June, that would give us the opportunity to go through the seventh, excuse me, the fourteenth regular meeting, and determine what we would continue to that twenty-first meeting, would that, that would benefit advertising-wise and those things, if we, those scheduled for the seventh, we had a place to roll them already?
That's right, yes, sir, and that's exactly right. If we continue them to a date certain, I think that meets the requirements, and we could also get through those.
One thing, too, we could do is, we could look at the ones that are real controversial, that had a lot of folks weighing in on, and we could just have those at special hearings, and then just take all the other ones that we can get through on a Tuesday night, and if there is one that comes, that's got a lot of folks, we could just continue it to...
That special meeting, I, yes, ma'am, I would think at the last Planning Commission meeting, we had three that we took significant public comment, the rest, I don't think we took any.
The rest of them are fairly quick.
Yeah, so...
What about the twenty-first? And if we don't need to use it, we can always cancel it, but if we go ahead and schedule it, then it's, you know...
Right. You'd rather do the twenty-first than the twentieth?
It's up to you, it's up to y'all.
I think, you know...
Twentieth is fine.
Twentieth is a Monday, yeah.
Yeah.
I have West Florida Regional Planning Council and another meeting on the twentieth, so it would have to be twenty-first for me.
Okay.
Are you going to schedule specific ones for the twenty-first, or just use it as a, as a date in case any get put off, and not addressed?
We can do whatever the board directs, but do we have time to, we should have time to advertise for that twenty-first on those particular ones?
Yes, sir, I believe so, yes, sir. Now, I'm not, the dates that Mrs. Thiemann had picked out, I'm not sure if she's cleared a twentieth. Many times, the judges are using the chambers down there, so we can verify that and make sure.
The twentieth?
Why did we say the twentieth, twenty-first? I thought we were here...
Well, she has conflict on the twentieth, so...
Okay, yeah. And I think twenty-first, twenty-first, twenty-second, they've all been cleared and are free.
Okay, okay. Twenty-second, then, I think that's good.
What about a, from the applicant's standpoint, their advertising and posting, if they've already moved forward with the fourteenth, it would be, it would be a burden on them to...
Well, if we continue the bound, I'll defer to Mr. Davis on this one, but if we, if we continue to balance those at the regular scheduled meeting, and give a date certain, I believe that meets the requirements and would not require a new posting or advertisement.
Then, I think to go along with what the board said, I think those that would typically fall on the fourteenth, we should allow them to continue that, and let the board take action to continue them to the twenty-first, if that's the date you select.
Well, one thing, too, is a lot of people come from out of town, you know, they come in for a hearing, and then you continue it to the following week, and it's creates, I don't know if that's the case with any of these.
I don't recall if anyone had mentioned they were from out of town on some of those. There was a significant amount of comment on those.
Some we have, yeah. Some we have are just, it seems like it's just everybody's...
Okay. And I was talking to Mac, I think we, we still have time to let the applicant know if there's a special date that they can advertise for that special date. So, if we could tell them, in the next couple of days, you're gonna be heard on this date, they can go out there and make sure their signs and all their advertisements are gonna reflect that date. Or you could continue them to a date certain, which would also meet the requirements.
Ms. Matters, did you say that twenty-second was better for you?
No, twenty-first is fine, yeah.
If it's, if it's acceptable to the board, why don't we set the date of twenty-first at five o'clock for a special meeting, and we will, staff will review those that have come through the pipe, and take the biggest two or three or four, whatever number's there that looks like it may have, take up the most time, and schedule them for the twenty-first. And then, as we go through the fourteenth, we can determine which ones there we would need to hold over as well. Now, would it be wise to go ahead and schedule a second date, so, because we can fill the twenty-first up with three projects probably, and then if we have some left from the fourteenth, we could continue them over to maybe the, scroll down, let's look at the Stinky Cheese Man, I don't know what that is.
Stinky Cheese is a play, it's on the public calendar.
On maybe, well, let's see, July the nineteenth?
Commissioners, just so you know, Sid will have to start those meetings, I have the school board that night, but that, she can start those meetings. We don't take very long.
And then, if we don't need the nineteenth, then we can, we can cancel it, but that'll give us a place to fall from the fourteenth.
Okay.
And we will have a meeting on the twelfth, so that would give us opportunity to catch for those as well.
Okay. July the nineteenth, okay. I need a motion to that effect, ladies and gentlemen, I believe.
Second.
I have a motion, second, is there any discussion?
Those will be at five PM at the South Walton Annex.
Any discussion in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is from our Solid Waste Department, is a request to approve the fee proposal and task order two thousand one six dash zero one for professional engineering services for landfill permit compliance for water quality, landfill gas, groundwater remediation system monitoring, monitoring and reporting with Preble Rish. This is cost of fifty thousand three hundred dollars. This is part of our semi-annual permit requirements, and we'd recommend your approval.
Did you say that again?
No, ma'am.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. Is there any discussion among the board? Seeing none, anyone in the audience? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is, staff is asking for direction. In some of the reports we had from planning, and some of our observations, we're about maxed out on space in the Planning Department. You'll have a request a little later on in the agenda to add some staff, which would further complicate that. We've, we've been looking at what opportunities are out there and available. We met with each of you and briefed you on some potential thoughts and ideas. Among those would be to acquire some space in Freeport. There's space there that could be purchased or leased. Perhaps purchasing raw land and building a facility, facility that would meet our needs. Expanding the South Walton Annex, or setting some portables in place for, in the meantime, or we could do nothing and struggle through. But the, the problem is becoming more severe, and it certainly has the ability to hamper the efficiency of our operations, so we, we're looking at a need for space, but we're looking for direction from the board on how you think we could best accommodate those needs. And with that, we just ask for your discussion, and we provide whatever information and data that we have.
I, I first thought that perhaps buying that property in Freeport would be the best, because it's, it seems like a pretty good price. And then, you know, somebody reminded me, well, what if South Walton does, you know, incorporate, then, you know, so there are a number of variables. I thought, now that I have rethought, maybe we could rent the property in Freeport with a thought lease buy, and if we decided to buy it, all our lease payments would go towards the, the purchase price. And, you know, the, we had drawings at one time, I believe I remember, to put another building on the other side of the parking lot there in South Walton.
In the, in the original master plan?
In the original master plan.
That was, that's correct.
We did. So, but they do need to get out of that building, it's tight. I know the supervisor, I mean, tax collector is squeezed, so is the clerk of court. They're tight, if we could, and any, say, improvements that we did to the, to the existing building in Freeport, those modular units could be moved to another building, the way I understood yesterday, they could be moved. So, you know, maybe that's the best way to go right now, in my opinion, is let's rent that building, let's fix it up, and in the meantime, kind of see which way South Walton is going, and then also look at how much it would cost to build a, a building there at the annex.
Madam Chair, so are you proposing putting a modular unit in Freeport, or modular units at the south end?
No, that long building in Freeport.
But then you've got all the, the modernization and remodeling expense, why wouldn't we just put some units here at the south end until there's a determination? And I, when I was briefed, there was not a whole lot of information about what it would take to, to buy land and build, so...
We've not done a lot of...
That's another uncertainty.
We already have land.
We have land.
Well, if I understood, Rick, yesterday, the module, the stuff they're using, they would use in the building in Freeport could be moved, because it's not, yeah, the offices could be moved.
But you have to build out the spaces in Freeport, because they're totally unbuilt.
It's a big space.
So, you're gonna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars building it out. I think modular units on the lot where Code used to be for the interim, and then look at, look at, look at either buying that building, or building a building down there, and in the meantime, but you've got people in the modular units working, and you haven't spent that much money. That's my only concern, is once you build those out, and you're leasing them, you've spent all that money, and then you move, and then they've got built-out space, and you paid for it.
What's the timeframe for obtaining modular buildings to put in, where the old code enforcement buildings used to be? A matter of months?
I would suspect thirty to sixty days, it would certainly be the quickest means to an end.
I'd like to know how much the modular units would cost compared to, compared to how much it would cost to renovate. And if we could take the, you know, the insides with us to another building, I really like the central place of Freeport, although I would want a person in the south and north intake.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So, I really, I really, I'd like a comparison of those, are you coming up to, you already have those facts, figures?
I've been working with Glendale on, before, on the modular, and talking to her, and some of the analysis that she's done, I believe to move a modulars there, you're talking about ten thousand dollars, then rent, I believe, would be anywhere between five hundred and seven hundred dollars a month for rent for the modular buildings. But the setup cost would be about ten thousand dollars. And in that scenario, we would like to go in the area that's already been improved, with the asphalt across the street, that would be the location where it was previously.
Yeah, where Code enforcement was.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I like the idea of centrally located in Freeport as well, with a kiosk in each place eventually, but whether we do it now or later, you know...
Commissioners, just chatting with Rick, the, the interior modular units to separate the office space is about eighty-five to ninety thousand dollars of the roughly three hundred thousand dollars of the renovations. So, that, that part would be able to go if we went in and remodeled it for our needs, and we decided to not make it a long term. So, it, it would be a couple hundred thousand dollars of permanent renovations that we'd have to abandon.
Mr. Jones, you've got a later proposal to add personnel, I'm not sure even that's enough, but why wouldn't we want to accomplish, until we get some more definition as to the options? Including building our own building, and those, whether or not they're going to incorporate below the bay, why wouldn't we want to get the, it here? And then we could be looking to see what our, our future needs are gonna be. So, I would, I would like to see us get the modular thing, but keep it in the old code enforcement parking lot adjacent. Then you've got everybody together still.
Sure. From a staff position, we're certainly fine with that.
And Wayne, on, on the flip side of that, and I understand what you're saying, haven't you expressed to me the difficulty of having planning here and planning here?
Yes, ma'am. I believe as far as efficiency-wise, having one central location benefits us to a large degree, to have everyone in one central office. Obviously, we'd need a presence in offices for taking applications, since that's something that we would, we were, if this were to move forward with this one location, we would definitely have to, to work out. But as far as efficiency-wise, and running a department, it is, to me, it is better to be in one location. You have more manpower in that one location, more redundancy when someone's out, things of that nature. And so, obviously, you know, in the perfect world, we would definitely like to have one location. However, we do understand the constraints that we have.
How long? How long would it take? Let's say we did lease the building, or bought it, or whatever, how long would it take to get the renovations done?
Six months.
Six months. I see, we're six months to eight months out from even being able to do anything, and the need is now. I think we do the modular units now, and then plan on, start planning on either this or a central building or something. I think that's...
Do you want a motion to that effect? I'll make a motion that we go for the modular units here at the south end in the old code enforcement parking lot.
Okay.
And? Second.
Okay, we, all right. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience like to speak to this issue?
Wayne, just a minute, I have a question. Would that mean that we left the north end Planning Department up here, and...
Yes, ma'am, we would, I mean, because right now, in the south end, we are maxed out, we're actually doubling up in offices right now. So, we had two new code officers start yesterday, and so we are maxed out completely where we're at. And so, to do anything additional, we're, we're gonna have to have someplace to put those people at. And so, you know, so that's why it's, it was important that we either do, we do something with it.
As part of your motion, do you want them to look at further down the road, or just the modular units right now?
I'm looking for right now, and I think staff and county minister will be bringing back in the future what we can do, and a lot's gonna depend upon the decision whether or not to...
Very good. All right, we have a motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item is a request, the initial request was approved to begin courthouse renovations to eliminate the water intrusion issues. We're not prepared for you to take action on that, but just did want to give you an update that we're actually are waiting on some bids for waterproofing, guttering, windows, installation of windows. If you recall, we took action a few meetings back to begin looking for funds to restore the courthouse, the original courthouse to its original state. We don't think it's prudent to even look for those funds until we have the water intrusion problem corrected, so that's our, our goal at this point. However, the folks we're depending on to get us the numbers hadn't gotten them to us yet, so we're gonna revisit that, and hopefully we'll have back for your consideration in the near future, the details along with that, securing the whole courthouse.
Okay. Do you need a motion? It says request approved to begin?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Next item is a request for direction regarding the Forest View Properties' desire to split the cost of signalization at the intersection of US 98 and MC Davis Boulevard. This is the new roadway going into the sports park. The DOT is currently doing a warrant analysis, we don't know that, whether they're gonna come back and say, oh, it's warranted. We certainly believe, once the park's active and the school's active, it will benefit all involved to have that intersection signaledized. So, at this point, we're just simply asking to, direction, if that's a desire of the board, we will move forward with, with an understanding between the developer of the Forest View Properties and the school board, that we would split the cost of that three ways at the appropriate time.
What would the, what are their prop share fees gonna be for that Forest View? Do we know?
Wayne or Mac, do you have any idea?
Because instead of splitting it, it seems to me it would be appropriate to find that out first.
Okay.
We can definitely pay our share out of their property.
And Walton County's, do we have to pay prop share funds for the sports park?
I don't think so.
And the school doesn't either, right?
Right.
If, if the Department of Transportation finds that it's warranted to do that, would they not be also kicking into the, into the bucket there? they not be also kicking into the, into the bucket there?
We would ask them to, but it's, if they're, in my understanding, in chance, if chances here, if we request a warrant analysis, do they, they will do it and tell us what the findings are? What, on what basis do, would we typically expect the DOT to contribute to the installation of a signal?
If, if it's existing traffic that's, that's warranting it, I believe, I believe they'll probably, you know, consider it. On this case, I'm not so sure. I, I need to talk to them.
Okay. But that's, we'd certainly put that in the equation.
I'd, I'd like to have that answer before.
Okay.
Going forward on that.
All right. So, we'll, we'll get some feedback from DOT, and we'll gather the information on the prop share, and we'll move from there. Okay.
Mr. Davis, it is my understanding that anywhere there's a school, the school board really likes a light, right?
If it's on a major highway like that, yes, ma'am. I mean, you didn't warrant it at Mossy Head oddly, and I was, but if it's a major thoroughfare, we really do like to have a light.
Thank you. All right.
Commissioners, next item is a request to hold a public workshop for Triumph Corporation legislative update. As you're aware, when Attorney General Bondi sued BP and those affiliated companies for the oil spill, they prevailed in that lawsuit and was awarded a two billion dollar settlement to be paid out over a period of fifteen years. Along with that, the legislature, legislature formed the Triumph Gulf Coast Corporation to administer those funds, and they also passed legislation that would direct seventy-five percent of those funds to the eight disproportionately impacted counties in northwest Florida. Things have changed politically in Tallahassee, and the original intent of that legislation was those two billion dollars, billion and a half dollars coming to the Panhandle counties over the fifteen years would be for economic development and seed money for large corporations. They thought was Triumph would direct these funds to five, six, or eight large projects that would significantly impact employment and the economy in northwest Florida. New leadership in the legislature, primarily in the House, has pretty well said that some of that's gonna be scrapped, and that the, the funds will now go into the general fund of the state, and to access those funds, you have to go through the traditional allocation and appropriation requests through the legislature, which we have done many times over the years, have been successful in some and unsuccessful in others. If that be the case, the, the first sum of money is supposed to hit the state treasury late summer, early fall this year. That first payment is four hundred million dollars, of which three hundred million should be directed to the eight in the Panhandle, assuming the legislature doesn't change that law. So, there's a huge opportunity to at least capture a portion of that. What we'd like to do at this workshop is to have input from Commissioners and the public on what we want to prioritize and go and make those requests. We'll also want to talk about the methods. I don't, we don't want to just show up and say, this is what we want this money for. We want to be prepared to plead our case and plead it well.
Yeah.
Because there's gonna be a lot of pressure to get to these monies, and we certainly want to play in the game. Now, again, if, if there's three hundred million coming to eight Florida counties, you can do the math, and if you divided it equally, that's a, a large, a large amount of money that we have available. There's no structure or guidelines that says it will be divided equally, but we certainly want to be there in position to capture all of it we can. So, if you would, we can look at some dates, if, if you think this is something that is worthy of moving forward on.
Was, was that handout that we got from them that showed Won County getting six point seven million dollars, was that, was that just kind of a concept, or was that?
Yeah. I think I saw Billy come in. Billy, you want to address some of that?
I, I have a handout from them that show all the allocations for everybody, and Won.
But I think that's restore money rather than Triumph.
Yeah, they, this is actually not restore money.
Not restore money, Triumph.
These were funds that the state won in their lawsuit.
Yeah.
So, it gets real.
I thought that was it, though, was seventy-five, twenty-five, and, but, go ahead.
Supposed to be.
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner, what we're speaking of today in this workshop request is specific to the Triumph dollars or the allocations there within, as Mr. Jones spoke of in regard to the Attorney General scenario. We are continuing to work those different pots and the money that I sent you. You're correct on the way that that flow of the different dollars. This is just one specific item, and the stake here is very, very high, because we're talking about, again, four hundred million coming in, probably in September, three hundred designated here. We have kind of a twofold strategy. The first is to work with our sister counties to make sure that we kind of sword and shield, we protect those monies, because now they've gone into the general fund. The second part is have a more specific layout of what you're going to do with the funds. So, we're reaching to the school board, to the municipalities, to the different community groups, and certainly with you all as our leaders, to make sure that we have both of those areas covered, so we can advance it.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right, we need to look at some dates.
Can, can we consider that we set special meetings on the twenty-first of June and nineteenth of July? How about earlier, before those meetings?
Be fine.
Say, on the twenty-first, starting at two o'clock, or three o'clock, because it's a five o'clock meeting, yeah. Are you thinking hour, four o'clock?
How much time are we gonna need?
How much time are we gonna need, Mr. Williams?
He's talking.
Mr. Williams, how much time are we gonna need? About an hour?
About an hour.
Okay, so, start at four o'clock? Four o'clock on the twenty-first? Is that a motion?
So, that's my motion.
Second.
I need a second?
Got it.
All right, we have a motion in second. Is there any further discussion? Anyone in the audience?
Will there, will there be an agenda, all the material beforehand?
We will, we will be visiting with each of you to get some input that we can put together and have in some type of organized manner. So, be thinking over the next week what those things would be.
Okay. Such as 331 infrastructure, you know, that was just an example. That was just an example.
That's a good example.
Good example.
And, and quite frankly, these are things, our hope is that when these funds show up, that there's a mechanism in place to let us phase projects, but get them approved early on, understanding that we don't need all the money this year, but we want some assurance that as those funds flow, there's, there's a part of it. So, don't be afraid to think big in some of these things, because.
And of course, Triumph money is, is originally, you know, for economic development, so, you know.
Is it going to still be for economic development, I guess? This, I'm sorry, is it gonna still be for economic development, or will it be for infrastructure projects? Or Billy, do you, can you speak to that?
In a lot of cases, infrastructure, I think, does, is.
I'm liking all this mic time.
Good time.
Yes, ma'am. The scenario is, as it's designated under state law right now, it is economic development. But as, as Administrator Jones pointed out, the current leadership is looking at creating a legislative budget committee with delegate members throughout the state. If it falls into that, which we think it will, you will see much more scope of traditional projects. So, it could be used for economic, it could be transportation, it could be economic, I mean, uh, transportation, it could be the things that we're accustomed to running through. We just need a very succinct order, but it gives, as, as he said, a lot of latitude and a lot of vision, because if you take that number on the surface, and again, this is no formula to it, just a hypothetical, three hundred million, you know, with that split is about thirty-seven-five per eight county. So, we want to make sure that we're teed up for those projects, but you can use it for the things that you direct.
Thank you.
And another part of the conversation we're having with our legislative delegation is, please, 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 create some mechanism outside of the typical bureaucracy that we have to deal with. For instance, a typical appropriation will go through the DOT, or through the DEP, or some agency, and we know how that gets bogged down, and it goes over there and it gets a life of its own. So, what we're encouraging them to do is create a particular office that deals specifically with these funds, so we can look at a multi-year approach to projects with the assurance that, okay, in the out years, you're already funded.
Somebody else gets elected, and then?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to.
We haven't, we haven't voted yet, sir.
Excuse me.
Give us a moment. We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion from the audience on this?
It wasn't stated, but I'm assuming the meeting's at the South Walton Annex, correct?
Yes, on the, on the nineteenth at four o'clock. Nineteenth or twenty-first at four o'clock, twenty-first at four o'clock. All right. All right, all those in favor?
But, 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 but the twenty-first is our continued hearing, and what if we don't have it? Because we talked about.
We'll have this anyway. This is.
We're gonna have this anyway.
I would hope so. We need, this is a meeting we need to have.
Okay, okay, okay. That's fine, okay.
Okay. So, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Next item is a request to approve Task Order sixteen-ten with, for CEI services for the Western Lake pedestrian bridge, bridge project with Tetra Tech Engineering Services. Next up, and get this thing moving.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second. Any discussion among the board? Anyone in the audience? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to approve, to advertise, and hold a budget workshop on July seventh, two thousand sixteen, at nine AM here in the courthouse in Dufeniac. I think last year was the first time we had a meeting in South Walton. If you wish to have that, we would suggest we do that on July the eleventh.
Yeah, I, I think it's good to have one in South Walton as well. It, it just makes it more, more people can weigh in on it. So, July the seventh?
July seventh at nine AM here, and we would suggest July the eleventh at nine AM in the annex. Unless you want to do one in the evening. Motion to approve.
Seven.
July seventh and eleventh.
Seven and eleven.
Seven and eleven.
All right. Any further discussion among the board?
Both at nine AM?
Yes, nine AM.
Quick question for Melissa.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, quick question for Melissa. With the, when on the eleventh, will that meet the statutory timeframe for the state?
All right, anybody in the audience? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Tusa.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Let's see, this morning, I have a few things I'd like to discuss with you. First up is a request to approve, to convert two seasonal beach code enforcement positions to two full-time permanent beach code enforcement positions. You know, I've been here for about five or six weeks now, and in kind of talking with you, the Commissioners, and seeing what's going on in the beaches, talking with Brian, I think the need for code enforcement is greater than just two seasonal positions. So, I'd like to convert those positions from seasonal to full-time. I think the training that goes in, as required, for those individuals is quite extensive in the fact that, you know, when we train them, we want to be able to retain those individuals. And I just think if they're seasonal, we're not gonna be able to retain those individuals from year to year. So, anyway, so we'd like to convert those positions. The positions are about thirty-four thousand dollars per year. We have the money in the budget. As of right now, we'd need to reposition about ten thousand dollars within our budget to make that happen, and that really is kind of for the outfitting of the vehicles. Any questions?
Motion to, motion to approve.
Second.
Second. You got it.
We have a motion in second. Any discussion? I see none, anyone in the audience? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up is a request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign an agreement for the South Walton Utility Company and the TDC, the transfer, the, you know, we have our logo on there right now, over to Sandeston, and Mac just informed me, so I'm gonna have to pull this agenda item for today. Mac informed me that that we're proposing is actually illegal, so I'm not sure.
Rebound.
He just, just informed me of this, so we're gonna pull it today, we're gonna look into it, and we'll bring it back to you, once we have a definitive answer on the legality of it. I'm actually gonna get Brian to come up and talk a little bit about the portable signage, and then I will address the next couple items and give you some updates.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, staff. Appreciate your time this morning.
What's that all about?
I, I, I don't know. I, I'm thinking it may have to go through the design review board, but first, it dawned on me, frankly. I mean, the contract is.
Specific language in chapter thirteen in the US ninety-eight, three thirty-one scenic quarter prohibits water towers from being used as advertising.
So, they'd have to get a variance to do it, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's code violation, I guess we gotta go after it.
We'd have to, we'd have to get a variance.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, staff. Appreciate your time. I'm Brian Kellenberger, Director of Beach Operations. Our request this morning is for the purchase of a variable message sign to use on Highway thirty-eight, primarily for our advertising for our free parking at Topsail Hill State Park, and then we'll use it for other events that we help a lot, help with directing traffic on Highway thirty-eight. This sign's a little bit different than your average sign, it's a little bit smaller, has a little bit better ability to customize a message, and it will fit better on our uses on thirty-eight. Approximate cost, twelve thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. We have money in the budget under our sixty-four hundred account to cover it.
Second. We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience? See none, all those in favor?
But I, I have a question, as a follow-up to that. Have we talked to any of the other state parks about doing a similar thing as with regards to Topsail Hill?
Yes, sir, we have. The manager at, at Great and Beach State Park also manages Deer Lake State Park, and he claims that his parking lot is always full anyway, and that they really don't have a need to have free parking. They, they enjoy their revenue off of it.
Just real quick, in addition to that, Jason and myself went out to Great and, I guess about two weeks ago, met with the park director, and there might be some things that we're doing. We're kind of working that relationship, seeing if there's some things we do. They might need some improvements to their parking lot, so we're kind of talking to him about that, see if that might be something we can underwrite to help facilitate that. So, so we're on conversations with them to see if we can do something for that park as well. Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, I'll jump back in. Request to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached resolution for the legislative and findings for landscaping. As you might remember, in the past couple of meetings, we discussed the landscaping specifically on three thirty-one, south of the bridge to Highway ninety-eight, and we have a legislative finding here and a resolution, you know, supporting that. In addition, though, it is not just for that section of highway, it's also for other sections as well. So, this will kind of cover us when we want to do something in another area.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in second. Is there any further discussion among the board? Anyone in the audience that would like to discuss it? Mr. Bagby, come forward. State your name and spell your last name for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jim Bagby, B-A-G-B-Y.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jim Bagby, B-A-G-B-Y. And I would ask you to relook this or send it back to the, the attorneys, specifically the fourth whereas, because I think you, you're setting yourselves up for failure. What the TDC has funded in the past is under the zoological park and nature trail section of the statute, the bike path. And if you remember, we've done the bike path and that side of the road, but we don't do rights of way. The TDC does not do rights of way, and I think your attorneys will tell you that this, you, you're gonna set yourself up for either a lawsuit or a finding from the Attorney General that says now you have to pay the TDC back everything, as opposed to if, if we do it right the first time. Because rights of way are the BCC's responsibility, not the TDC's. But if you, we did put money in the budget, and, and you did approve it, for destination entryway improvements. And if you remember the discussion in the budget, that was both ends of ninety-eight, I think it was about two hundred and fifty thousand or three hundred and fifty thousand, Brian can remind me, for the south end when you come off the bridge. Now, it wasn't the whole length of that median, because again, that's not the destination entryway. That is a right of way or a county median. So, I would, I would be surprised if your attorney would, would let the road rights of way and medians, specifically that phrase, stay in. I would ask that you replace it with destination entryway improvements, because that's, that's much more specific, and that is covered under the statute.
In fact, I think, I, I think just the opposite's true. I think using the terms that we're using in here makes a legislative finding to implement what's in the budget. I, I think this is a much, this legislative finding covers us a little better than what we had done in the past, and that was the whole point of having this, is to further, to define those entryways as rights of ways and medians. That was the whole purpose.
And, and the problem with that, Madam Chair, is real simple.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but, but I want to make sure we understand. We're not talking about all over the county. We're just talking about those.
But that's not what the finding said, and that's the problem with the finding. When you say just road rights of way, you're talking every road's rights of way in the South County. So, I think that language needs to be.
You can't read one whereas clause and, and it's, it's controlling the rest of it. You have to read it as the old legal term impera materia. It's designed just for that specific purpose. You can't read one and say that's for the whole county.
But the third clause, we've never, or fourth, I'm sorry, we've never maintained any medians, okay, or roads' rights of way. We have maintained the bike path, okay?
Which is in a median and, and part of the right of way.
But it is in, but it's in the right of way. But we're maintaining the bike path under a different legislative finding. So, I would just say it's overly broad.
Thank you, Mr. Bagby. We appreciate it. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Does it take a supermajority? Of course, we all voted aye, so it doesn't matter. Okay, all right, next.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then, let's see, we have requests for direction for landscaping of three, we're at thirty-one, south of the bridge of Highway ninety-eight, to Highway ninety-eight. Wanted to see if, what the wishes of the Commissioners are for moving forward with this project. If we want to hold a public workshop, if we want to, I will point out that we recently had, I guess this past spring, the Public Space Design Guide that we were working on, and we held workshops for that in that process. And in there, we kind of figured out what kind of, you know, native landscaping we want to include as, as part of that process. So, I'm not sure if it's necessary to hold a workshop specific to this, since we've already discussed it and it's in the guide. The guide's just about finished. We'll be bringing that back to you probably in the next two to three meetings for you to view. So, if you want to just put it on hold until you see the design guide and what's included in it, we can do that, and then we can bring it back up after that, just however y'all want to proceed.
Is there any necessity in, in moving this forward at this time?
I know there's, there's some funding issues with, with timing. Stan, do you want to address that?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, we met with DOT a few weeks ago, and they are, it is somewhat time-sensitive. They're moving forward with it as it's currently designed. So, if you choose to enhance the project, would, you'd probably need to move on it fairly quickly, or we'll miss that window of opportunity.
Madam Chair, my understanding of this project is obviously, is DOT is gonna put it in, and this is a, and the contractor that puts it in is guaranteeing it for survival for two years. I know we, they've used terms survive and then thrive. So, the question then is what mechanisms must be in place to make it thrive if that's where we wish to go? Now, in looking at that and, is irrigation. And the question is, is whether or not they put piping into those medians during the initial construction. And if they did, and I don't know, I think Lee Moore was gonna check with DOT on it to find out if they did or they didn't, that's a pretty expensive proposition for the county to take on, to have to bore it underneath that road bed to get it, irrigation into there. So, it's something to keep in mind unless Stan, you know.
Commissioners, I understand it with our, in our meeting with them, they have some excess funds in, in this project budget, but they've withheld them awaiting your decision whether or not you want to accept maintenance. So, those excess funds, as I understand it, would go for, one, the, the irrigation infrastructure, and then they would put some more landscaping in that would be a little bit more water-dependent than what you currently see there.
Okay, are we so far down the pipe that we can't talk to them about the rocks that they've got out there, the gravel they've got out there as far as the design? I see those as a problem when you start mowing and you start peppering the side of somebody's cars that go by with them, rocks. So, maybe there's something else.
If they're gonna put in irrigation, couldn't we also put in grass?
If the irrigation there.
Be more, and be more, you'd have to mow it.
Well, either that or somebody's gonna pay for all them rock damage to those cars if they get in there with a weed eater or whatever.
It's my understanding, though, correct me if I'm wrong, Stan, that if we do the, the higher level with the irrigation and, and the, the thriving scenario, then the TDC would underwrite the cost of maintaining that.
With that legislative funding, I believe that's correct.
I think we go ahead and move forward on it, ask them to remove the, the rocks.
Okay.
And put the irrigation in and move forward.
If nothing else, if they don't want to put in grass, they can always put in mulch, you know, or some, you know, rather than rocks, but yeah.
Commissioner, I think with the current design, they were trying to design it such that water was not.
Low maintenance, yeah. Low, low maintenance, yeah. Rocks don't need a whole lot of water.
Atmott does. All right, do we have a motion and second?
Yeah, that's my motion, that we move forward with it. We request that they, they irrigate it, put the irrigation lines in, and remove the rocks, all the rocks.
We have a motion, second. Any further discussion in the board? Anyone in the audience? Lee?
I do have one question while she's coming up. They, they've got some small rocks in the medians, and then they've also designed some boulders, three boulders. Do you want to take all of that out?
We don't like the boulder.
We don't like the boulder.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't like the boulder. This isn't Arizona.
That is correct. Lee Moore, M-O-O-R-E, representing the Scenic Corridor Foundation, again, and I'll be brief. I've spoke in detail the previous time that this came up, but, but we do support this very much and have been working on this and other medium projects for years and years. So, we're excited to see this, and that was my understanding too, Stan, that I did, I did contact, and I'm sorry I didn't get back to you, Commissioner Chapman, but FDOT about the sleeves, I, I don't understand why they weren't pre-installed, but they did say that they would cover the expenditure, the funding needed to, to make that possible. And so, yes, we support you, Scenic Corridor Foundation, in getting rid of the rocks and getting more to the traditional types of plantings that you see. And I think you being willing to fund that maintenance through the TDC or, or wherever will allow for more, a much more input on the design from the county, was my understanding from our meeting. So, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And lastly, just a few updates. I'd like to recognize Christina Tilton, the TDC's Lead Administrative Coordinator, for completing the Chambers Leadership Walton Program. She and her classmates will be recognized at a event this Thursday, a graduation event at Sandeston, so I just want to congratulate her on, on completing that program. It's a great program. The TDC held a meet and greet a couple of weeks ago. It was well-attended. I got to meet a lot of industry people, community residents came out, so it was really nice. We probably had about a good forty, fifty people who, who attended the event during the course of the full hour. So, I appreciate the Commissioners who, who came out. Thank you for your support. Also, had a Visit Florida Board meeting here the week of May ninth. That, that event was very, very good, very well-attended. Got to meet with some of the senior leadership at Visit Florida. So, that was a good experience for me, and they, they had a good time staying at the Hilton and having their events over at the, the Sandeston Convention Center. A couple of updates on some of events going on. Three thirty-one Bridge Park Workshops, just a reminder, we'll be having Wednesday, June first, at five p.m. That workshop at the South Walton Annex, and then Monday, June sixth, at four p.m. at the Freeport Community Center. And then the TDC Advisory Council Meeting is June seventh, at nine a.m. at the South Walton Annex. And then lastly, I just wanted to bring up to you, you all know that Art Miller has resigned his TDC seat in his treasurer position. So, as of right now, Gary Bremeyer has assumed the treasurer duties as vice chair. It is appropriate for him to do so. So, he has been signing all of our, our invoices and bills. And what I'd like to do is, in the next few weeks, come back to you with some recommendations, so you can, you know, vote on a new TDC member. But I'd like to, first, next meeting, I'm going to bring back to you, we talked with Dan Fenton, the strategic planning for the organization and the TDC council, and so we're, we're tweaking a little bit there, what we're doing with the council. And so, just before we move forward on, on doing something, on appointing a new member, I just want to make sure that we have those changes in place, just so we make sure that if we, you know, get an individual who wants to serve, and we might change it, and they might go, well, that, I, I can't make that commitment based on, on how you're changing it. So, I think it might be appropriate just to wait a few more weeks. Like I said, next meeting, we'll be bringing Dan back in, so we can finalize those, those plans that we started, I guess about six weeks ago when I first started.
Jay, Monday, June the first, what time does that workshop start?
Uh, June first is at five p.m.
And then, and then the one on June sixth starts at?
Four p.m.
Four p.m., okay.
June first is a Monday, is it?
June first is a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Sixth is a Monday.
The sixth is a Monday, correct. So, any questions for me? Great. Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Commissioners. I only have one item. The first item was deleted. The second item is a request for comments from Commissioners and schedule a date for a vote on a proposed policy regarding appointees to volunteer boards. Just by way of a little bit of background, we were asked, the office of the county attorney was asked, to come up with some definition or policy regarding what is just cause. The, the land development code and the boards it creates says that a member of those boards can be removed by just cause, but there's no definition of just cause in the code. So, we were asked to come up with a policy. I have received, after we drafted this and published it, I've received a fair number of comments and suggestions. So, what I was gonna suggest is you just simply put it, put it over to the next meeting or whatever meeting you choose, so we can have a chance to answer those concerns and maybe even make some changes that have been suggested. But you, give you an opportunity to look at it and, and make proposed changes as well.
I understood it was kind of a draft to begin with, and, and that we could look at, you know, and making changes. And a lot of these, if I'm, if I'm correct, Sydney, are based on, the TD, the TDC actually does have.
Yes.
Policies, and a lot of these are, are based on, on those, but you know.
We used it as a basic template and add some things to it.
Just take a look at it, and we'll bring it back later and, and have a discussion.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Come back June the fourteenth.
I'll leave it to you guys if you want to do it that fast.
We might want to wait till later. The, the June fourteenth looks like it's filling up.
Okay.
You know.
June twenty-eighth?
Somewhere, we'll, yeah, but, yeah, we'll.
Thank you, Commissioners. That's all I have.
Ms. Meadows?
Yes, we need a sign out at Kellogg Bayside Park, so I'm asking to approve, I'm, I'm making a motion to approve up to fifteen hundred dollars, District Five, Berwickshire, plat fees for signage at the Kellogg Bayside Park, the, that particular little area there, not the big area, but that little part that's on the bay. We're calling it Kellogg Bayside Park. That's my motion.
We have a motion, second. Any discussion? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Infell?
Madam Chair, not on the agenda, but over this past weekend, there's been a significant amount of activity by both the Sheriff's Office, our emergency management people, fire and rescue, and I just wanted to recognize their, their fine efforts. A lot of them made the, the front page of the newspaper, and I just wanted to thank both the Sheriff's Department and our emergency management people for jobs well done.
Commissioner Jones?
I'd like to maybe include, or work with DOT to include the north end of three thirty-one for landscaping, because as we come from the north, right approaching the bridge, we really need to make that look nicer as well. Also, there's a piece of property on the left. There's, going across the bridge on the left, there's a little building. It used to be a fish house. I heard it was for sale for like seventy thousand. It, it might be worth our while to look into that, to see if we could purchase that, and so we could spruce that up, maybe have a little dock there, kayak, and we couldn't have anything major, but it, it would just really make a nice aesthetically, you know, place for, to, to, to improve it basically. So, and I was wondering if we could include the north end when we have the meetings, the public meetings, to discuss some north end landscaping as well.
We'd be glad to do that.
All right. Doesn't we need to vote on any of that?
Any direction for staff on that property? You want us?
North end, north end, are you talking about the entire distance of three thirty-one up to Defuniac, or just?
I, I think that's what we need to talk about in the public meeting, how much we could get DOT to, I mean, yeah, I would love to do it to twenty, but I'd, you know, whatever DOT would work with us on, I think would be good.
At least around the bridge, maybe, at least that, okay. So, you're asking the staff to bring us back the report?
Right, and could we get an appraisal on that property that's supposedly seventy thou, I mean, you can't buy anything for seventy thousand, so I would think, I mean, I would like to see us get an appraisal and see if we were interested in buying that.
We can look at it, obviously, but my concern is accessibility to it from the southbound lane. I do not believe there's gonna be a cut right there, so you either gotta come across into the A and circle and come back. But we'll have to look at that and see, but I mean, that'll be something to look at.
Madam, Madam Chair, I think that requires the, the formal process for acquiring land, so I'd like to make a motion that we pursue that. We can always address Commissioner Chapman's concerns too, once we see what it is, but I'd like to at least make the motion to start the process to see about the possibility of acquiring that parcel.
What would we, what would be, we be do, using it?
I think she mentioned that she wanted to consider putting any, a, a boat launch or a little, little dock there.
Well, it couldn't be a boat launch, most likely. It would just be a little dock for kayaking, or really aesthetically, it's not a big lot, but it could be really nice, you know, to the eye as we approach the, the bridge.
And a lot of people use that area, especially with their children, because it's not, there's not as much wave action as out in the Gulf. A lot of people take their children swimming in that area, you know, so.
I second the motion.
I think we used to call it the redneck Riviera back in my day.
Yeah, the east side, the east, the west side for sure, because there's a little beach there. Yeah, that's, the west side for sure. Isn't that for sale as well?
Yeah.
It is.
I think so, the west side as well.
I think with, you know, I think we ought to look at that, because that's got a real beach on it. The other ones kind of.
I will amend my motion to include both sides.
Great. I second.
All right, we have a motion, second. Any further discussion among the board? Would?
The process begins when you find that there may be public good in acquiring the property, which would lead us to do, obtain an appraisal, and when, in this case, we'd have public works and planning look at it, to look at all the ins and outs about it. If you include the west side, it becomes a little more complicated in that motion, because. Unless we will, well, I understand, but there are a number of properties on the west side that come into play. I mean, unless you want us to begin to process on all those as well. I, I think we're, there's some conversation with DOT and some other mechanisms that might come into play there. I, I think this would be cleaner if the motion was to, to deal with this piece, understanding we want to do, you know, continue working on the other side as well, but I think this perhaps, but we'd, we'd do whatever you tell us to do, quite frankly. But I, I think there's a clear separation in, in this one, in the unique, uniqueness of it. It only requires one appraisal. We need to look at what the DOT's doing, what the cut-throughs are gonna do, what the potential use is. The other side, like I said, is a number of properties that would work together.
So, you want two separate motions. First motion, just to be dealing with on the east side. Yes, sir. On the north side of the bridge. Yes, sir. Okay, I'll amend all my other motions to make it my motion.
You amended your motion, okay. Did you amend your second?
Yes, I did, second.
All right, we have mo, anyone in the audience? All those in favor?
Aye.
Second motion would be to start the process to determine whether or not we've got, in dealing with DOT, the ability to do stuff for the public good with regards to properties on the west side.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
There we go.
And I have one other thing. At the J.C. Alford Park in Gaskin, we're getting a splash pad. Saint Joe has given me ten thousand dollars to go toward it, and I see on the agenda where Commissioner Commander, thank you so much, has given me an additional five thousand. So, I think we're two thousand dollars short of being able to do this, but we'll find the money unless another Commissioner wants to give me some money.
All that was chicken. All right, well, then, if that's the case. All right, well, then, if that's the case, now, I ain't got as much as Ms. Meadows over here, but I'll give the 2,000 if the board wishes.
Thank you so much.
Can you do it today? Do we need to put that on the agenda for next time?
No, we can go against the guess and splash pads on there, Wolf.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we approve the splash pad with these two.
All right, that's a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, anyone in the audience? All right, we have a splash pad in Gaskin, everybody in favor? Aye, there we go, all right. Let us know when it's open, we want to be the first ones to play in the splash pad. I have three items, number one, I don't see him here, but I understand that Dennis Ward, who some of us fondly.
You forgot me.
Oh, I forgot you, I'm so sorry, sir.
That's all right, I'm taking leverage.
Well, you're so little.
I don't really have a whole lot, I want to thank, I want to thank the board and staff for the well wishes for my father. At the last board meeting, I couldn't meet him, he's 92, ended up getting pneumonia and was hospitalized that day, so I went there. But again, thank you for your well wishes and prayers for my father. He's home now, supposed to be resting, but I bet he's out in the garden, so not sure how long it'll last, but thank you again.
I'm so sorry, I've left you off, sir. I shall regret it forever, I know.
Have your nose on, would it made a difference?
Yes, sir, if you had your nose on, it'd made a difference. Anyway, as I was saying, I understand that Dennis Ward, who we finally called Skeeter, is retiring, is that correct? Is this his last week, or?
Tuesday, the 31st.
The 31st, so is he in the building?
The way we raised it all today, first.
Well, if you, if you gentlemen will give him our best wishes, he is, I have known him longer than I, I want to admit, he's a fine officer and he will be missed, okay? Yeah, my first, my first one was to give you $5,000, we've already accomplished that. My second item is my planning commission appointee. I have, after some consideration and thought and all, I have decided to thank David Kramer for his service, but I would like to, his time is up. I'd like to appoint Frank Anderson, he is a businessman, he lives north of the bay, but he also has interest, financial interest, a house, and that sort of thing, south of the bay, so he's really, you know, from both sides of the, of the county as well. I would like to appoint him to that position, and that is my motion. Second. All right, we have a motion second, any discussion? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, motion carries. All right, citizens' request, Jay Lyles. You know how long you're going to be, Mr. Lyles?
Well, good morning, Commissioner, and thank you, Chairwoman, Commander. I was wondering if you would indulge us to take a short break, so we could get our technology aligned with your technology?
That would be wonderful, thank you, yes.
And we will do that very quickly. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, while they're doing that, you need to wait on this? Go ahead and do it. Those of you who have red noses, if you want, would you come up for the picture, please? Joel. Joel Glenn, Joel Glenn. I saw you looking at your watch. Do you have a timeframe? Okay.
Do you need to change orders?
If you don't mind.
Don't mind at all.
We'll call the meeting back to order, and if it's all right, because we have some funeral directors in the audience, and I know a little about being on time for a funeral, so we're going to take that up first, and then we will continue with, with the other items. Mr. Davis, you're first on the agenda, and didn't DeeDee, where's DeeDee, she, she had an update to the policies, I believe? Somebody did? Where's DeeDee?
Yes, she did.
Okay.
She was with Mark.
Or Mark, did you have, do you have those?
Give me a second, I have to find them.
But did you want to come forth and say something, Mr. Glenn?
I would like to say thank you.
And if you would state your name for the record and spell your last.
Joel Glenn, with Clary Glenn Funeral Homes and Crematory. I'd like to just say thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for allowing us to continue the indigent program here in Walton County for the last three years. On July 2013, at the regularly scheduled board meeting, July the 13th, you all gave us the opportunity to enter into contract with the county, and so we thank you for that. We've been serving the county for many years, taking care of the indigent families, unclaimed remains, and we're so honored to continue to do that. However, the contract is a 36-month contract, which gives us the opportunity to renew that if both parties choose to do so. So I would like to say, we would like to continue to renew the contract with the county's permission. On that note, the families that we serve that are indigent, just would like to say how thankful and how grateful they are that our county has this program, because they have no financial wherewithal. If it were not for this program, they would have no means wherewith to cremate their loved one or for final disposition. Also, as a part of that, the city of Dufuniac Springs has been so gracious to allow us, once we cremate these remains, if they're unclaimed, they allow us to use their cemetery in an indigent section to bury these cremains, so the city is also on board with this program as well. We've been working with them and been working seamless and very well, so I want to say thank you for those areas. And so just wanted to point out that we are under contract with you all, we've been fulfilling this contract for the last three years, have been honored to do so, and serve the families of Walton County. With Madam Chair on the board, she's been in the funeral industry, she knows what this is about. For many years, there was no indigent program in place, and so as a funeral home owner and operator, we would just meet the needs of that family and certainly not turn them away. But since the county has this in place now, three years ago, the county sent out bids for this indigent contract, because before, you would just receive a bill from XYZ Funeral Home, and you would just pay a certain amount to that funeral home if they met the indigent requirements, but you deemed it necessary to contract with a specific funeral home, as other counties were doing to find it much easier and easier for the families that we serve. So you all sent out bids three years ago to all the funeral homes in Walton County, Okaloosa County, and I believe also Holmes County. The first bids that you sent out, we were the only funeral home that responded to that request, and we were honored to do so and honored to receive the request from you as a Board of County Commissioners. I did contact the staff and spoke with your staff and ask, you know, what the response was. They said, Mr. Glenn, you were the only funeral home that responded, so the Board of County Commissioners has asked us to send out a second request. So we sent out a second request, and there again, nobody responded. Clary Glenn Funeral Homes was the only funeral home that responded there again, to help indigent families and unclaimed remains in our county. So I was at the board meeting and you all awarded the contract to us. We set the amount at a very, very frugal amount that covers our expenses only and barely does that. We want to continue the contract at the same amount, we're not asking for an increase, and we certainly make no revenue and we make no profit on what we're doing. We do it as a service to our community and we're honored to do that. So as a part of that, as we've continued to serve in this capacity, we found that other funeral homes would pick up indigent cases and then want to be reimbursed for their services for picking up these remains when you were in an exclusive contract with Clary Glenn Funeral Homes. I would submit to you that those funeral homes had the opportunity to put a bid in for these expenses and chose to do, not to do so. So with that in mind, I would just like to submit to you today that, once again, I'm standing before you to say that we're honored to serve the indigent families in our community, to help those that are unclaimed. We have people that come through our county, for example, we had a gentleman that was a transit, he was hitchhiking through our county, coming from North Alabama, headed to South Florida, and found himself, passed out on the highway, EMTs picked him up, took him to Healthmark Regional Hospital, he eventually passed away there. They knew the Clary Glenn Funeral Home had the contract, they could not reach any family, couldn't reach anyone. We, we picked up the gentleman, brought him to our funeral home, and we began through the help of the Sheriff's Department to try to find family members. We in turn done so, but found out he was indigent, the county paid to have him cremated, and the family was so thankful for that, because he was transit, he was unclaimed, there was no funds available. The family that was found was, they had not had any contact with him for years, and they had no financial wherewithal. So you have situations like this, and I could name many cases, and it's good to have the program, and so we're honored to continue to do that for you. So I just want to ask any questions at this time from you.
I have a few comments, Mr. Glenn, and I do appreciate the jobs that y'all do, as you well know, I was over 20 years in the funeral business. The only trouble that I see with another funeral home, a family calls XYZ Funeral Home, they go to the hospital to pick up the body. You don't know at that time whether or not that family's indigent, and I would be horrified to know that someone asks, hey, can you pay this bill when I'm picking up the body? I mean, that's just something that I would have never done. You serve, we are in, when I say we, I still consider myself, we are in a service industry to serve the public. We're in almost like your pastor. You don't ask those questions. You get them back to the funeral home, and if they are indigent, well then, you know, if we have a designated person, well then, to me, it's only fair to reimburse the funeral home that picked him up. If you're going to, you know, for that, it should be a minimum amount, it should be a set amount for picking up that body. Because I just cannot see trying to find out if a family's indigent before you go and pick up a body. I mean, sometimes that's 2:00 in the morning or 4:00 in the morning, so those are my concerns, and I think that's why we are trying to take a look at this and see if we can make it fair for everybody, because I can assure you, and most of you in this room know that my, Robert Commander and I are not married anymore, but I can tell you that man would have never turned anybody away. I have the highest regard for him and the way he treated families. We would have never turned anybody away. So in that, in us trying to solve the problem, I think DeeDee's, has come up with an idea, or Mark has, do you want to?
Well, the statute seems to contemplate two different types of situation. One's an unclaimed body, and the second is.
Can y'all hear Mark?
I'm sorry, and the second is a person who's indigent and can't afford burial services. What we were thinking, this contract ends, Mr. Glenn, this contract ends in, I believe it's July of 2016. You had directed us to go out for an invitation to bid and march for these same services, and kind of thinking through it out loud with our folks and DeeDee and the purchasing folks, what we would probably do is go back to, or what we're going to recommend, is go back to, if there is, you have a body that, and you determine that it's an indigent service, that we set an amount for all the funeral homes that we would pay for the indigent burial, or, excuse me, cremation, because it cannot be a burial, as I understand it. And then we would have a separate procedure for unclaimed bodies, because the statute seems to separate the two situations, and we would adopt a resolution on how to handle that as well. We're not prepared to hand you that today, but that was sort of where we were going. The alternative is, is to bid out again, well, there's two alternatives. The first is to bid out the services, just like we did before, and this contract does say it can be renewed upon mutual agreement, so we could either bid it out or renew this contract. But those were the three alternatives we were looking at.
Let me add to that comment, if I may, if that's okay. Okaloosa County has the same procedure that Walton County currently has in place, and I spoke with staff when they were trying to put this together originally, and there's no difficulty with the funeral homes in Okaloosa County. They all recognize that Lewis Funeral Home out of Milton has that contract, and so when the hospital calls, most of the time, I would say 95% of the time, if not higher, if a family's indigent or the remains is unclaimed, and you need to be aware of this as county commissioners, the hospice workers are aware that family's indigent, the nursing home staff, the hospital staff, the law enforcement staff, whomever it may be, that family has said, look, we have no funds, where do we go from here? They don't just blindly call a funeral home and hope for the best, they know right away that they're indigent and they have no funds. So with that in mind, they call the funeral home that has that contract. However, if they call a funeral home in Okaloosa County, or were to call me in Walton County and say, we have an indigent remains, then immediately, first thing I ask them is, are they an Okaloosa County resident? Yes. Lewis Funeral Home has the contract with Okaloosa County, you need to call them, they'll take care of that for you. We've had that happen on numerous occasions, where the nursing home would call in Destin, Destin Healthcare in Okaloosa County, I would say, Lewis Funeral Home has the contract. All the funeral homes over there honor that, and they recognize that agreement. Same thing should be done in Walton County, and far as, you know, if someone calls, and Ms. Commander made a very, very compassionate comment, that you don't ask somebody how they're going to pay for these expenses when they call you at 2:00 in the morning, we certainly don't do that, but there is a thing that we do, which is called due diligence. When a family calls us at 2:00 in the morning, we express our condolences and we express that we're going to be there to help them in their time of need. The next question we ask them, would you like for your loved one to be cremated, or would you like for your loved one to be buried in a local cemetery? We start our due diligence to know what steps they want to take in the final disposition of their loved one. In the course of those events, they're going to say, Mr. Glenn, we're going to have to go with cremation, because we have no funds. That's the first thing they're going to say, we need to find the most least expensive route, we have no funds. They will let you know that. And so with that in mind, whenever a family tells you that they're indigent, if there's a contract in place, the funeral homes would say, you need to call the funeral home that's handling that. And I've had, one of the funeral homes here in town, they've done that before, the police department called and said, we've got an individual here in the city limits, they're indigent, and the funeral home said, you need to call Mr. Glenn at Clary Glenn, he has that contract, he takes care of that services for the family, we don't handle indigent cases, and that's the way it's handled. But if you've got a funeral home that's not willing to honor that, and they go out, pick up the remains, bring them back, and then they want to be paid for their services, they're not honoring the contract that's in place, and that's the difficulty that I have with it. But whatever the board chooses to do, we're going to handle the indigent cases at our funeral home, you know, no matter what, that's something we've always done, like Ms. Commander said, but we want to be here to help the county as well.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak to this issue? If you'd come forward, state your name for the record and spell your last name.
Joel Davis with Davis Watkins Funeral Home, last name D.A.V.I.S. As far as the statements that are made that there was no indigent program in place, that's not true. We served it for years for $450. We made a profit at $450, and we didn't claim to be Mother Teresa when we did it. It was a service that we provided, and the only reason we dropped it and it went to a bid, because Clary Glenn Funeral Home in those situations wanted to be paid about $600 for transportation if we were to move one body to our funeral home. The county paid me $450. I can't pay a funeral home $600 for transportation, which is three times the normal amount, when I'm paid 450. Because of that conflict, that's why we dropped it to a bid, and did not rebid, was to eliminate the drama. Once Clary took over, the indigent account was paid double what the amount was, the first four cases we served, they refused it. He told me, I'm not coming, it's not my problem. He said, if I have to pay you the 275, which is our fee, it's not worth it to me. What's not supposed to be worth it to you, and to begin with, it's a service of the county? So in this situation, we called the indigent program, they said, well, if you'll go ahead and just serve it, well, at first, they said, we can't pay you unless you have the account. Then it changed to, well, if you'll go ahead and do it, we'll pay you for it. Now, we have, I have five other funeral homes, in no other county, and even the funeral home of another state, it was never an issue. If you switch from one funeral home to the other, they didn't have funds, it was something you shook hands on, and it's not true to say that 99% you knew. I've got families that come in that say, we don't have anything, and then when it comes time, they find out what the fee is, they write me a check for it. Every situation's different. Just because someone says I'm limited on funds does not make them indigent and mean the county should pay for that. So there is a due diligence, and looking to the situation, making sure, not only, because we've had situations where they didn't have anything, but a cousin did, and it was not right to file for an indigent unless it fell under those guidelines, but again, there was countless times they refused to come. When they refused to come, we started honoring it, the county started sending us a check, and we didn't have a problem with that. Then on this last case we had, he called fussing, saying, you should have called and told them that I had the indigent account. After that, I said, well, just pay us for transportation, 275. He had the family, instead of taking out of the 895, he had the family pay us 275. They're broke, the check they wrote me bounced. So again, this is the conflict we had, they're trying to find out the definite rules. Again, it was mentioned, well, there's other counties don't have this problem, they don't, because again, we even provide services, cremation services for funeral homes to help their indigent program, not even our county, to where homes to help their indigent program, not even our county, to where we do a cremation that costs to help another county do it. So again, the only thing we're asking is to have a definite rule and to me, it's just common sense. I understand there's situations where they tell you ahead of time. If they do, I send them that way every time. But when I go to a family's house, I'm not, and Mr. Glenn's the one who suggested that, that you ask them, do they have the funds? I'm not going to insult a family based on what their house looks like, can you afford this? So a lot of times you have the arrangement conference and it's not to the end where you present an invoice to them that they go, we just don't have that, what can we do? And so the solution to me just seems simple, that in the cases where you know ahead of time, it's obvious to send it to someone else. But in the case where you find out at the end of an arrangement conference, why can't the funeral home just send off, receive the amount and eliminate a lot of unnecessary drama? It works fine, like I said, in other counties, and we just request just to have some kind of definite rules that I know, because each situation so far has been treated differently. If we could just know exactly how to handle this, I think it would just eliminate a lot of problems. And I would like you to ask, if you were interested in doing the bid again, again, the only reason I did not bid is because he was the only funeral home anywhere that was insisting, a family that had no money, give him $600 for going right down the road, in many cases, less than 35 miles. So as long as we could serve the indigent account and not have to have a $600 bill, then we would gladly serve and we were doing it for half what Clary's doing it for. And again, we didn't mind doing it for $450.
Thank you. I don't know what the solution is. I think maybe the contractor, whatever, that whoever picks it up can show that they're indigent to the county and that sort of thing. But I'm going to step out on a limb here, gentlemen. I've known both of you for a long time. You're both Christian gentlemen. You serve these people. We serve those people in a time when they need us more than any other time in the world. I ask you to work together and be gracious, you know? Be gracious. It's time for all funeral homes in this town, there's enough business here for everybody. I just pray that you will work together to find a solution for this problem. You're both wonderful young men.
Let me ask, Madam Chair, if I may. The last family that he referred to, that the check bounced for $250, the family came in our office and expressed that they were not aware-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Could we just not go into all of these? I mean, this is not the time nor the place and I would like to just call an end to this. I mean, it's ridiculous.
I think it's time y'all sit down and talk about it together, okay? And if you need Mark and DeeDee in with the two of you, and then if y'all will bring back to us a solution, okay? How's that?
Sounds good and we'll be glad to help anyway as we've continued to do so for many years and it's an honor for us to serve these families.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Jay, you're up next. I'm sorry, I got emotional.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was a rather solemn event, so let me just, I'm trying to learn the ways of Walton County.
There you go.
And quite honestly, I think this makes me look good, all right? I see a few smiles here, but for a guy with a big nose, this kind of works for me. Thank you all. We are going to today provide you all with an overview of a project we have been describing as the 30A Mobility Project, but really, this is the Walton County Mobility Project because it has ties to North County, it has ties to the central part of the county and to 30A. So I'm not going to take any more time right now, but what I would like to do is tell you that today you'll be hearing from Robert Davis, the founder of Seaside, who came to us with this idea and thought this is something we need to figure out a solution to. And Joakim Tyber, he's with the ITIC, he's their chief technology officer, actually, he'll be the last person speaking. And then Jim Barbaresso, who is with the national engineering firm HNTB, or NHTB, I'm sorry, NHTB, he's going to talk about the overarching development of autonomous vehicle use in the United States and here in Florida. So each of us will keep our comments as brief as possible. And first of all, I'd like to introduce Robert Davis to open this discussion with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Thank you. I'd first like to thank, I'd like to thank the commissioners for providing the $120,000 grant that's allowing this second workshop to take place. The first workshop was courtesy of DEO and this workshop, I think, will get us further down the road toward clarifying our thinking about what is needed to connect all of Walton County together to provide alternative forms of transportation to decongest 331, which is a linear parking lot right now, not just because of construction, but because our TDC has done such a great job of bringing more and more visitors to Walton County. I'm convinced that the 30A Mobility Project will succeed, particularly in the buzz department, press, social media, cocktail chatter, et cetera, if people experience travel here as an adventure. The 30A experience will be appealing to those willing to slow down and enjoy the ride. One of several taglines that we hope will redefine the 30A brand, which is now, I think, being tarnished somewhat because it's one of those places that people don't go to much anymore because it's too crowded. I just heard this from an old friend who works for the TDC, who hasn't been to any of our wonderful ballet performances, so she loves ballet, because trying to drive down 30A in the middle of spring or summer has become such a challenge. So the program will really, once again, put 30A out on the leading edge with automated vehicles dispatched via smartphones powered by fast charging batteries that are exemplars for low speed urban and beach vehicles. These vehicles will glide down a road that's already considered a great scenic drive, except in spring and summer. 30A will become a place for cool rides, not thrill rides, because the speeds will be slow, but pleasure rides, rides that encourage you to take time, don't let time rush past. The project will also beautify 30A, making it even more scenic by planting trees, creating medians through congested areas where there will be tree line medians and trees on either side of 30A next to the parking aprons, and an additional bike path, perhaps for motor assisted rickshaws like this one from Palm Beach in the early 1900s. Are you going?
It's right here.
Okay. Oh, there it is. You're seeing it somewhere, I guess. Okay. And then dedicated transit lanes through congested areas where about people stuck in traffic to watch our fleet of 35 mile an hour battery powered vehicles glide slowly by and wondering why they're not sitting in one of them. Could you go back to the Volkswagen microbus? I think we're out of sequence, it's back. There you go. Like this one, it's supposed to be a 23 window microbus, it's all glass with a roof that peels back, so you get a great scenic ride. We're proposing to have young car designers from the Art Center College and the other couple of colleges that do car design, do competitions to reinvent the Volkswagen microbus on an electric platform and to have this manufactured, hopefully here in the industrial park near Defuniac, using 3D printing technology. All of this is really exciting new tech that will, I think, put Walton County on the map. So, and then we'll have electric taxis like the reinvention, there you go. Okay. This is a Fiat Jolly and it won't be exactly like this, but we'll basically take a golf cart platform with smaller, more compact, quick charging batteries and put a vehicle like this with a Suri top on it and it will pick you up and take you where you want to go within the nearby area. And then we'll be doing the land yacht. I don't know how this, well, there's another Fiat Jolly. No, that's the jitney.
Oh, I know what you're talking about, Cadillac.
Right. There we go. I don't know how we got so out of order, we had them in order, but you copied the wrong one. Anyway, we're also proposing to recycle some of these big old convertibles, which I have a great love for, some of you folks may know, and convert them to battery power and turn them into self-driving rides, really cool rides. And then the jitney.
jitney, it's the big bus.
The big bus, okay. And then the jitney that will basically just go up and down 30A will be an evocation of the sightseeing buses in the national parks in Yellowstone and Glacier where the tops roll back, they have lots of doors and you can get in and out of these things and again, enjoy a leisurely ride. 30A Mobility will connect walkable traditional and neo-traditional communities, already landmarks of the new urbanism. This movement started here as neo-traditional town building and it still gathers people to study Seaside, Watercolor, Alice, Rosemary, and also Seagrove and Greton, the older urbanism that's inspired the movement. This project will bring more people here to study both urbanism and a forward-thinking approach that applies to mobility, ecology, and equality of life. The influx, this influx of the curious will also augment our proposal to attract thought leaders, university programs, and think tanks to a campus in North Walton that would combine performing arts and performance car design, preservation programs for both buildings and automobiles, robotics and research on aging, sustainable farming and food production. The students and faculty on this campus would benefit all of Walton County, including Defuniac and 30A, where performing arts spaces and programs already exist and where an aging population will be served by young caregivers trained in helping us through our last decades of life, helping us stay younger longer and helping us die with dignity, preferably at home. We have gotten a lot of indications of support from manufacturers. I just talked to some folks who were hoping to be part of this presentation, but our 9:30 appointment came and went. From Toyota, which is developing sensors for automated driving and wireless charging, as well as traffic algorithms that will help these vehicles find the shortest or quickest route from one place to the next place. Those algorithms will help us with the design of 30A where we think the medians going through Seaside, going through Seagrove, don't really need to have two lanes, they can be only one lane, if we can tell the vehicles where they can pass each other. So that will enable us to do the median without having to widen 30A or take more right of way. We also talked with an executive from Cisco who is doing traffic monitoring and vehicle to vehicle communication research and they would like to participate in this project. They can't be here for the workshop, but they'll be coming to visit us sometime in the summer. We have talked extensively with Florida DOT, which would very much like to support this project and will be coming back to you with their ideas at the end of the workshop. And I hope as many of you as possible can attend the workshop, at least for a bit of what we're talking about. And then we've talked with a former Assistant Secretary of US DOT about a new program that would provide funding for infrastructure for transit oriented developments, which 30A certainly is. And she thinks that we would be very good candidates for this funding. The legislature, obviously, the Florida legislature is quite interested in this and we're thrilled that Senator Latvala managed to get a half million dollars into this year's budget for just this project, to do the exploratory engineering and try to move it forward. And then we also plan to apply to the Triumph Committee, which according to the people I've met on the Triumph Committee, is really looking for big ideas and ideas that will carry the state of Florida well into the future and prepare it for the rest of the 21st century. If we're successful in our quest to decongest 30A, we will have shown that South Walton need not allow spring/summer congestion to reach the tipping point that makes it no longer a cool place to visit, one of those places that nobody goes to because they're too crowded. There are a lot of such places in Florida, most of them on a slow ride toward the bottom, places that need more and more people spending less and less per person to sustain a tourist economy. We've got several such places east and west of us that we can see devolving instead of evolving toward a more sustainable economy. These places are also unattractive to the people who work in the tourism economy because they have to spend so much of their time in barely adequate paychecks just to get to work. 30A Mobility will provide park and ride lots for workers as well as for visitors, along with inexpensive shuttles to get them to work or to the beach. Twenty-something years ago, the South Walton Conservation and Development Plan, which I was privileged to serve on, urged us to start thinking about this place as poised to use tourism as a magnet and a hook, to grow beyond a tourist economy by making sure that the visitor experience was so great that the visitors would start thinking about becoming residents. They could then be persuaded that our schools, our transportation alternatives, and our environmental protections were so attractive that moving here and creating knowledge industry jobs and manufacturing jobs was reasonable, not just a daydream. A lot of people daydream while they're on the beach, but they go back home and don't do much about it. So now's the time to start to make sure that the visitor experience is not degraded by traffic congestion, that instead, this place is showing the rest of the world the future of mobility in conjunction with the future of land planning and environmental protection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Now, I know we're exceeding our time, we'll make this very brief. I'm going to ask Mr. Barbaresso to come up for just a moment, he's going to give you an overview of where we are with the current lay of land. Thank you.
Yeah, good morning. I'm Jim Barbaresso with HNTB Corporation. We're a national-
If you'll spell your last name for me, please.
Yes, B-A-R, B-A-R-E-S-S-O.
Thank you.
All right. We're a national engineering firm, but we have offices throughout Florida also, so we do a lot of work in Florida. As Robert pointed out, we are right now on the cusp of a transformation in transportation that's being driven by three, actually, technologies, connectivity of vehicles, automation of vehicles, and electrification of vehicles. Right now, the current state with regard to connected vehicle technologies is that there's a notice of public rulemaking that will be issued very soon. It's right now being reviewed by the president and it will be coming out, what it will say is by 2017, that vehicles will have to have vehicle to vehicle communications for safety purposes. And this is exciting because right now, we have more than 30,000- And this is exciting because right now we have more than 30,000 fatalities on our roads throughout the country, and this technology could impact over 80% of those incidents. From an automated vehicle perspective, this isn't a pipe dream any, any longer. This is happening right now. In fact, many of you probably have vehicles that have some of these advanced technologies already in them, lane keeping, for example, automated braking. Actually, 20 different automakers will have, without any regulatory force pushed, put on them, will have automated braking available as a standard feature in their vehicles by 2022. This is incredible, too. It's going to really improve safety dramatically. Another trend that's going on right now is mobility as a service. This includes companies like Uber and Lyft, but interestingly, the auto companies are also getting into this. And you might have seen recently where Fiat Chrysler joined forces with Google, for example, and Ford created Ford Smart Mobility, a separate entity just to deal with the new and changing mobility environment. Some of the current initiatives going on, and I'm proud to say that HNTB is part of this, with the Connected Vehicle Pilot Program. It's all about deployment now. It's not about research and development anymore. And Tampa was selected as one of three sites nationally for connected vehicle deployment. And this is exciting, and there's some lessons learned that can be transferred to the 30A project, because we're doing a lot of transit work in Tampa using connected transit vehicles that would communicate with the traffic signal control system to give them priority and to move them quicker, but also safely with regard to pedestrians, because it will also include pedestrian detection capabilities. So very exciting technologies that are, that are coming about that can be transferred here. Another aspect is the Smart City Challenge, and this is really exciting, too. Seven cities have been selected as finalists by the US DOT to vie for a $50 million prize, a $50 million project to incorporate automated vehicles, connected vehicles, and electric vehicles. We're working with three of those cities right now. Today is the last day that those applications will be submitted, and within a couple of weeks, they will select the winner of that competition. But many of the things that are going on in those Smart City Challenges, cities, are applicable here also. And those lessons learned also can be transferred here or shared with those cities, because I think this particular project, the 30A program, is really, really on the cusp of being a leader in terms of some of these technologies. When it comes to the legislative authority, there's a lot of new funding available for these types of technologies at the federal level. For example, through the FAST Act, there are three different programs right now that offer literally billions of dollars of funding for these types of technologies to advance technology, improve safety, improve mobility. And, and a lot of it has to do with freight, too. We cannot forget about freight movement, especially with I-10 out here being a major freight corridor, east-west from the ports on the east coast to, to destinations west. Overall, this is going to be a game changer for Walton County, but also for the, for the country. And there's a lot of things that need to happen, though, to integrate these new technologies into the current environment, especially in a, in a situation like 30A in Walton County. But, you know, the, the keys, the technologies are there, and we have the, basically the capabilities to be able to integrate these technologies into this environment and do it in a way that meets your motto up here of pride, preservation, and conservation. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. And if you're able to come to the workshop, Jim will be making a further presentation on this. Do I have time to introduce Dr. Tiber for just one minute?
Just one, yes.
All right. Dr. Tiber, if you might wrap us up, sir.
Yes, my name is Ahem Tiber. I worked for long-
Spell your last name for the record, please.
Tiber, so T-A-I-B-E-R.
Thank you, sir.
I'm representing a nonprofit organization called ITIC, which stands for International Transportation Innovation Center. So we are working in conjunction with the Seaside Institute to work on the Walton County Intermodal Transportation Innovation Project. So I don't know how much time I have, just for a few slides, so just maybe, and I will just go very quickly. So first of all, I wanted to explain what ITIC stands for. ITIC is an organization that develops test beds for connected and automated driving, but also zero-mission driving. And we have seen that there's potential for the 30A corridor to become a test bed for this. So we helped with the first workshop in October. We are currently also organizing the second workshop in conjunction with Seaside Institute. What ITIC is about, to work with communities and cities to help them implement these technologies. So I have been personally involved for over several years in the creation of an international center of automotive research in South Carolina, where we invested $250 million over approximately 10 years, created more than 1,000 jobs. And in conjunction with this project, we also created a test bed. And this test bed had been implemented at an area which was a former military airport, and based on this knowledge, we are trying to transfer this knowledge here to Walton What I think, what is the key point here is that 30A is plagued by traffic congestion issues, and these new technologies that Robert Davis explained can help to decongest the 30A corridor. But there's more than just 30A. I think the whole county can benefit from this influx of technology. And what I basically think is we can attract industry partners to the county here to work on this innovation project. So we have got the attention of both major companies that Robert mentioned, but they also will attend this workshop to get engaged in this project. We also got the attention of startup companies and venture capitalists that want to get engaged. I think that in addition to the service jobs that are here in the, in the, in the county, in the tourism industry, we should also add research and development jobs and manufacturing jobs. In order to bring these jobs to the county, you have to create an infrastructure that is very attractive for these companies. And last but not least, you also want to bring the best minds together. So I think this workshop can help to bring these people together, brainstorm the problems, how to solve them, and then hopefully make the decision to bring jobs to the region. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Thank you all for your indulgence. Are there questions that we can answer now, or would you like to hold those and come to the workshop with us? I know we've taken a lot of your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your presentation.
Thank you all.
All right, next we have, on the citizen's request, I have Tammy Levens.
All right, Ms. Levens, you have-
Tammy Wilder-Levens, L-E-V-I-N-S. Let me start by saying thank you for allowing me the opportunity once again to come before you to speak. As in the previous meeting, I came to you not both as a mother and a concerned citizen to express my concerns of child safety on a busy roadway. This road is Alakual Drive. I will not go over the issue again since you have all heard my concerns. When we met on April the 26th, it was not to cause friction in a small community, but it was to make awareness of children's safety. At the meeting on April 26th, each one of you stressed your concerns. Commissioner Jones, you said that you have a grandson that lives on a busy roadway that is very unsafe, that he might pull from you at any time. You said that you would like to see speed bumps put in place to slow these people down. Commissioner Meadows, you spoke up, and you said that you've dealt with a similar issue in your neighborhood. You also are personally aware of the situation that is taking place. You said yourself, I quote, "It is all in the name of safety, and if we save one child's life, it is all worth it." Commissioner Commander, you said that stop signs should be put out. This will allow the sheriff's office to do their jobs and to write tickets and to help control the speeding with the stop signs. This will slow them down. Commissioner Commander, Commissioner Chapman, you stated that it will take the combination and the effort of the board of county commissioners and the sheriff's department with both the combined effort to put both in place. But by putting up stop signs, this will allow them to do their job in enforcing the law, since they are already blowing through the speed limit signs that have been posted. You also suggested that the signs should be put in a common area, south of Don Blizzard, to help to make effectively due to the decreasing of acceleration of rate. I would like to ask for all of you to think about what you have said and voted on. I would also like for you to ask yourself, are we going to be proactive in preventing the unthinkable, or are we going to be reactive, as can be discriminated in the, can be discriminated in the past, not by this board, but by another veratic party? For example, the red light on US Highway 98 at Blue Mountain, or the light on 393 at both, which have made travel slightly inconvenient. But if either of these have been put in place sooner, there might have, it might, sooner at least five deaths have not, could have been prevented. I would like for you to ask yourself, what makes children's and citizens' lives any less valuable today that they were three weeks ago when you voted, anonymous, board, for the safety issues on Alakual Drive? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Pat Haney.
I'm actually Becky Haney.
Okay.
H-A-N-E-Y. I am Mrs. Pat Haney, so my husband, he's here also. But I want to tell you a little bit about myself first. I live in the Portland community, just off Alakual Drive on Alakual Acres Road. This road is also known as Athena, T-H-E-N-A. My husband and I have had a residence here for 31 years. We have a 22-year-old daughter that was raised at our residence here. I'd like to thank the commissioners for hearing from the other residents that are involved in, with the, with the decisions that were made on the April 26th meeting. None of the other residents knew that was going to be taking place. First of all, I do want to state that none of us want to have a child put in any danger. The difference in perception, I think, of the severity of the speeding problem on Alakual is where I think a lot of the issues come in. Alakual Drive has been portrayed as a heavily traveled road with very young children on the road, and I think that is probably a little bit exaggerated. Alakual Acres Road and Athena, or Athena Road, as it's also called, is where the board decided on April 26th to put up a three-way stop sign. That is a private dirt driveway, which is my driveway. That is our driveway. My husband and I are the only residents that live on that road. We own all the property on that road, so I was a bit surprised when I came home and saw a three-way stop there. I have, as I told you, the neighbors and I were unaware of any of these issues that were going on until the three-way stop signs had already been put in place. At that time, I called and spoke with Commissioner Chapman, and I also talked at length with Public Works Engineer Chance Powell about the issue and how this came about. I went down and talked with Tammy myself. We, I was told at that time that the decision had been made, that the commission had voted on it, and that the only way to get anything else done was to come before you at this I have been asked by several of the other residents in the community to present the board a petition that is signed by the residents stating their opposition to the changes that were implemented on Alakual Drive. They feel that the traffic issues are not as significant as probably they've been portrayed. So if it's okay, I have the petition here. I would like to give you the petition.
You can certainly hand it to the clerk.
Okay. I also have some maps and some pictures.
If you would give her a copy and, for the record, and you can pass the rest out. Watch your time.
It also has a photo or a couple of photos of the intersection at Don, Don Blizzard Boulevard, which is where Tammy Levens' residence is located. My house, my driveway is only about 200 yards from where Tammy's residence is. There are about 30 houses, I think, in, in our neighborhood. There are about 20 full-time residents that live in homes there. The petition that you have was signed by 32 people from about 20 different addresses or 20 different residences in that area.
Watch your time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, let me, let me go briefly. I, I won't go through then the description of the proper, the, the road. I hope that you all, if you've not had a chance to be, to go there, could look, but it is a quiet neighborhood with not what we would consider heavy traffic. It's not a busy road. I would ask that you do a comparison of Alakual Drive to the next paved road over, which is Whitfield Road. That road has Alakual Animal Refuge at the end of the road. A lot of people come down Alakual Drive that are actually lost, looking for Whitfield Road and the, the animal refuge. So I think that maybe some signage on Miley Road that cuts across might help to alleviate some of the, some of the traffic issues there, also some signs that there are no turnaround down that road. I'd, I'd request that you take the engineer's recommendations on some simpler measures that can be done with signage and so forth to hopefully have a, a little bit less drastic measure taken to begin with.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Does the commission want to take this up again?
Yeah, I think we need to try and do something.
Thank you, ma'am.
The road is obviously in District One, which is in my district, and I have done a site visit. Oh, you want to speak, sir?
Okay, um, do you want to go ahead? These two are on the agenda. Do you want to go ahead and take public comment on it now? That's up to y'all.
Well, if we're going to take it, let's go ahead and take it now before I lead into my stuff.
All right, anybody else that wants to speak to this SU, if you would come forward, please? If you would state your name for the record, I'll spell your last name, and sir, if you don't mind removing your hat, I would appreciate it.
No, ma'am, I'm not. I'm sorry. No disrespect to you, but my, my head looks like 40 miles of bad road, so if you'll allow me that courtesy, I'll keep it on. Any other time, I'd take it off. As a matter of fact, I'm sorry for overdressing for this meeting this morning. I would have been the first one to voice my concern. My name is Charles Glenn Neese. I live at 193 Portland Park Road.
If you will spell your last name for the record, please.
N-E-E-S-E.
Thank you.
You and I have had some good conversations. You're one, you're my county commissioner, and, and you've helped us on quite a few issues then over the years. We've been a resident for 14 years, but we have owned an eight-acre parcel on Alakual Drive since 1967, which has our, which we frequent every day. And I observe, my, from my observation, personal observation, there is no safety issue at this time, maybe there one day- at this time, maybe there one day will be, to put, to warn a stop sign on Alacoa Drive. And that's my personal opinion. And as being a retired school teacher for 35 years and stood bust duty every day, I think I know a little bit about that. I'd like to add my name to the 34, the people that have protested against the, the stop sign. Thank you.
If you want to, does he need to come sign it, Dory? If you will go, if you will go over to the clerk and sign your name to it, sir. Yes, ma'am. If you will say, "Come forward, please." If you will state your name for the record and spell your last name.
Okay, I'm Eda Busby, and I'm real nervous, so.
Oh, you don't hate.
I wrote stuff down, so I won't forget. It's Eda Busby, B-U-S-B-Y.
Thank you, ma'am.
And we've lived in Walton County for over 30 years, and we bought a house on Ruth Road in 2005, and that's right off of Alacoa. We also own a lot there. We love our neighbors and our neighborhood. Our daughter and her husband are staying, and their children, are staying in our home on Ruth Road and ride bicycles together on Alacoa and ride up and down to Route 20 on that road with two little kids, not unattended, however, with, with adults. They have not had any problems, so this was news to us. They ride often, they're always supervised when they're on the street. Needless to say, I was shocked to see in our quiet neighborhood flashing lights, stop signs, and talk of speed bumps. It was surprising. Someone clearly does not know our neighborhood because none of the above-mentioned are needed or wanted. This is costing taxpayers money, and it's unnecessary. We have a very quiet neighborhood, and cluttering the roads with unnecessary signs and lights or bumps will take away from the beauty of the area. I could count, all I know is I could count the cars that pass on Alacoa Drive on one hand on almost any given day. My grandkids ride on bicycles on Alacoa regularly. I think the stories from Ms. Wilder should be questioned since so many residents have not seen or heard of any of these problems that she's mentioned. I don't know her, but I feel like she has spoken out of place when she indicated that we, our neighborhood, wanted these changes because we do not. And I'm really nervous. Like I said, I don't know that, what this lady made the complaints, but Ms. Ruth Wilson does know her and has had previous experiences. And the only reason I talked with Ms. Wilson is because we were having the signatures made. And she said she's had problems with her before and that she found that she had said she was a troublemaker.
Let's try to stay out of.
I'm trying to. I, that's not something I wanted. It's not me that said it. It's, I can't stress how much we treasure our quiet little corner of the county, and we don't understand how one person can disrupt so many lives and change the look of our peaceful road into a blinking bumpy one full of foreboding signs. Please stop this woman's nonsense now. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
All right, thank you, ma'am. I have one question. Have you noticed speeding on the road? Do y'all have speeding, you know, high-access speed on the road?
No.
Does everybody follow the speed limits, to your knowledge?
Exactly. Even so much as we're common sense people, if there's somebody on the road, we even slow down below the limit. You know, it's, now, I can't speak, some people have worked on and people come in the neighborhood on occasion from outside, and we can't control like a truck with construction stuff and, you know. So I'm sure there are issues with people we don't know, but the neighborhood as a rule is very quiet. It's a very quiet road, and we can sit on our back deck, and we have lots that, across from us, they're not ours, but they're empty, and we can watch the traffic on Alacoa when we're sitting out there. And there's very little to, I'm, I was surprised when I found all this out. It just sounds like it's a totally different description of another road. So that's.
That was all. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue? Yes, sir. As I stated, come forward, state your name, and spell your last name for the record, please, sir. I bet you're Pat.
I'm Pat Haney, yes, ma'am. Pat Haney, H A N E Y. I'd like to say that most of the traffic on our road is basically our neighborhood traffic, and our average age there is about 50, or, or over, I'd say. That's, that's being lenient, so I don't think we have a big, not a bunch of hot rodders out there. Most of the traffic that's not ours is people basically lost, going, trying to go to Alacoa Animal Refuge. And if we could just get a sign up there at Miley Road showing them which way to go, I think this would eliminate about half the problem that we have. Miley Road is, has a 25 mile an hour speed limit over there. They don't seem to have any problems. They have way more people and way more kids than we do. And we'd just like to ask that you take a second look at all this and, like I say, try to preserve our, our community as it is. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Alicia Godin, G-O-D-D-I-N. I am a resident on Alacoa Drive. I'm the first house on your left as you come down Alacoa Drive. My husband works for the Walton County Sheriff's Department. We have four children, which all of them are living at home right now. I do have two younger ones. They do travel the road on their bikes, on their hoverboards, walking. We walk for recreation. There is a speeding problem on the road. I don't know if we need speed bumps. I don't know if we need stop signs. I don't know if it will help anything, but in all of your residential areas, there are stop signs. I don't see what the big deal is. If it will protect a child or anyone, there are a lot of older people that walk the road. I've spoke with some of them that walk it daily, and they talk about how people fly down the road. So, I mean, I think not everybody could get off work and come today and speak, but I think it would be worth your while before you make such a vast decision not to put your stop signs in place or your speed bumps as you had decided in the past. I think you should get out and talk to some of the other residents that live directly on Alacoa Drive because there is a problem on the road. I know also the house at the end of the road is being renovated, and there's going to be a lot of weddings and stuff held there, so there will be a lot of traffic coming in the future on that road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? She brought up a question that I have when she said there was hover, are hoverboards allowed on public roads?
On the side of the road, yes.
On the side of the road? Okay, thank you, because I don't, I don't know what they are. I thought they were like, anyway. So, all right, if, if there's no other discussion from the public, Mr. Chapman? Commissioner?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. When this came up about three weeks ago, I'll be the first to admit that I was, thought that Tammy lived somewhere else other than at the corner of Don Blizzard, Blizzard Road in Alacoa Drive. I have made a site visit out there. I have had discussions with the Hanes, Tammy, and I've got a host of emails, both pro and con, from the two different sides, if you will, for down there. Obviously, what this Board, or any Board, would be cognizant of is the fact that we want to do what is right, that is with safety in mind. We sure don't want anybody to get hurt, especially a child. But we also got to look at some measures to find out what we can and cannot do that will be legally justified in the future. I've had the County Attorney's Office to do some research. I also went back and talked with our Public Works folks to determine the requirements that must be met to determine if there is a, a need for a stop sign intersection there. And I will ask them to come forward here in just a minute to give me that. We have gone out there so far and put up slower speed limit signs. We dropped it, I think, down to 15 miles an hour south of Don Blizzard Road all the way to the water. It's a single outlet. There's, once you get down there, you got to turn around and come back unless you're going to float. We also put up some child, in the area of child play and signs that are also there. We did put up stop signs, and somebody in the community decided to take it upon themselves to remove those stop signs and then deposit them. Now, no matter how you feel on this particular matter, you or anybody else don't have the right to come out there and take the county's property down. Now, the Sheriff's Office is aware of it. I don't sure what they're going to do about it, but that's neither here nor there right now. The other thing that was found out recently, we went out, put out a counter to check the traffic counts, speed, et cetera. Somebody down there took it upon themselves to spin their wheels over the top of it and damaged it, so we have no data. Those are not the way you try to get something accomplished. It's to come up here and have a dialogue with this Board. Now, whether or not we put a stop sign there, I don't know yet. I do know that we've lowered the speed limit in that area. I know that we have placed signage up there identifying there's children in the area. I have reached out to the Sheriff's Office and asked them to provide data from, for the last two years concerning Alacoa Drive. There was a total of 32 calls for service on Alacoa Drive in the last two years. 23 of those were for suspicious vehicles. The other nine fall under their category of other. It's abandoned vehicles, dog calls, damaged mailboxes, the like. But they have no reports of speeding in the last two years from anybody in that particular area filing a complaint about the speeders. So, rule of procedure, some think there is a speeding problem down there. I don't know. I don't live there. So, I would like to ask legal to give me your opinion concerning ramifications that we have as a county if we instruct staff to put a three-way stop intersection there. Now, before I ask, answer that, Mr. Davis, if you look at that road, originally it was Thelma or Athena, whichever way you want to call it, was where it was going to go, which was Alacoa Acres Road, I believe. Well, I know from my past law enforcement experience, if there's going to be acceleration from an intersection, it's after you stopped and you take off. If it was allowed to stay at Athena, you would have that full acceleration past Don Blizzard where Ms. Tammy lives. Consideration might be given to put one at Don Blizzard Road, if warranted, instead of down at Athena. So, with that said, Mr. Davis, would you expound upon the legalities and the liability afforded to the county?
I mean, yes, sir. If, if we're placing traffic control, traffic control signage without traffic or warrant studies, that, that does raise some liability issues in case there's an accident later on that may or may not have been caused by the.
Can y'all hear him?
It's on.
That's what I thought. You just got to believe it.
By the, it caused by the obeying of the traffic signal. So I, I would be very hesitant to encourage you to place those types of traffic control signage without traffic or warrant studies being completed.
All right. With that said, then, I'm going to ask Chance, if you're still here, to come forward as our engineer, to determine, he's got certain regulations with MOT and other things to satisfy before we place anything that's out there concerning traffic control.
Yes, sir, thank you, Board. You know, engineering judgment for placing a traffic control device like this, we typically refer to the MUTCD. That's the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And they have a, a section in there, Section 2B.06, all, it's always stop or multi-way stop applications. And there's a series of items that you check off to see if, if this intersection warrants an always stop. First of all, it states in here that multi-way stop control is used where volume of traffic on intersecting roads is approximately equal. It goes on to say that it should be considered only in areas where there's at least an average of 300 vehicles, vehicles an hour over an 8-hour period. Being that our traffic counter was damaged, I can't tell you if that number was met, based on doing some traffic generation, based on the uses that are there, you're not going to get that. It's also stated in the MUTCD, yield or stop signs should not be used for speed control. So, you know, based on that, my engineering recommendation would be not to put an always stop on Alacoa Road.
What are your suggestions? Do you mind me asking? What were your suggestions to?
Can I, can I interject in that? That's what he said last time. And remember, we said we can overrule him if we want? And we voted to put stop signs there. So if we're going to take them down, we're going to have to vote to take them down.
Well, I was going to make that motion.
And, and in my opinion, if you put them there and you take them down and somebody gets hurt there, we've been notified by these folks that they think they're speeders and they think there's danger. We've been notified. We've been put on notice. Somebody gets hit there, we're going to write a big check.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I, I kind of tried to bring this point out last time, and I don't think I was very clear with it, but I really feel like it might not help the situation today, but I really do feel like we need a policy. Now, we attempted to do a policy before my time on speed bumps, but I think it needs to be bigger than speed bumps. I think we need to include traffic calming, crosswalks, no parking, intersection improvements, signage, speed limits. And, and what I saw in this policy that I feel like we can pull from is there's communication with the residents. There's a meeting with the residents to see, you know, we wouldn't be here today if we had communicated and knew, you know, the feelings of everyone, understand the safety issues, you know? I think this community needs to come together in some form or fashion. So I would like for future, you know, after we get through this one today, I would like for future some kind of policy with Public Works to work with legal and come up with some kind of policy that gives us, you know, some guidelines, you know, communication, you know, what recommendations after research and after really some in-depth. And, you know, whoever broke that counter, I just, you know, we need that kind of information too, early on. So that's kind of my feeling. Now, it's not just about speed bumps, I understand that, but it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a broader policy of how to deal with, with this. What are the other ideas?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like for us to keep in mind or consider, okay, if we go up there to Miley Road, which is north of the primary residential area, and if there's a lot of traffic that is coming down there because they're lost trying to get to Alacoa, maybe we could put some signage at Miley indicating, moving them, telling folks they can turn left there and go on over to Whitfield. Then, leave the lower speed limits in place, do the fact of the residential area. Also, maybe incorporate a no outlet sign somewhere up there where people can turn, maybe there at Miley, because there really isn't a reason to go down there unless you're visiting somebody. And of course, I do know there are people that will use that particular end of the road to launch their boats for floundering and other things in, in the bay. So, with that said, I'd like to make a motion to remove what, the action that we took three weeks ago as far as the stop sign or the three-way stop at Athena, and continue with the, the signage that's down there now, correct me, is covered. It's not unfold, I mean, it's not uncovered yet.
Only stop signs.
Only, only stop signs. So, we'd leave the, the speed limits there. We dropped it from, I think, 25 down to 15 through that area from basically, I guess, around Don Blizzard Road south to the bay. So the motion is to remove, take the action that we implemented three weeks ago by placing a sign at Athena or Thelma, whatever you want to call it, no, excuse me, Alacoa Animal, I'm sorry, Alacoa Acres Road, remove it from that location, and just stick with the lower speed limits and child warning signs for the area.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, we have a second for discussion. Might I suggest that we take some time, being the, being it was damaged, being our county.
Might I suggest that we take some time, being it was damaged, being our counter was damaged, that we take a couple of weeks here and actually put a counter back. Do we have another one that's not damaged that we can put out there, gentlemen?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's get an actual count on that road before we decide one way or the other. But let's put an actual count on that road and ask that it not be damaged. And it, and maybe the stop sign be left down until we get that count?
Well, they're in the county yard. I believe we just took them in back to the yard before putting them back out again.
That way, the residents on that road could see whether or not there's, you know, the rest, it's warranted. I don't know. That might help. But we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Jones?
Well, I certainly want as much information as I can before I make an informed decision. And, you know, I'm thinking maybe a stop sign at Don Blizzard might be a good solution. That's right there at Tammy's house. And, you know, I'm, you know, I'm concerned about kids. I have not been out and seen, you know, the neighbors, I mean, the road. But to make, to make a decision, I would want as much information, and I don't feel like I have it because the counter was down. And I kinda think we got the cart before the horse or whatever, you know. So, at any rate, that's what I'm thinking.
Madam Chair. I think, point of order, I guess, Mr. Davis. The motion is to not go forward with the sign there at Alacoa. Now, I agree with Commissioner Jones. If we want to at least stop what we were originally gonna do there, which is a part of my motion, then we can take the, come back and take action as far as allowing staff to try and get this data again without it being destroyed, to come back and report to us, and then maybe consideration for, might be made for Don Blizzard as far as an intersection. But from what I can hear from our engineer and from legal, you got to have a pretty high traffic count through that area to even warrant the three-way stop, and I'm not sure it's there. Now, whether or not, in response to Commissioner Meadows, if we overrode somebody, overrode the regulations, where is our liability there also? If, I would assume if we went into some type of legal action, that the plaintiff in that case is probably gonna say, well, where is your data support what you did there that resulted in this accident? So, I don't know if we're kinda damned if we do, or damned if we don't. But my motion is really is to supersede or actually stop what we did as far as the three-way intersection at Athena and Alacoa Drive.
Until, until we can get further information?
Further information, yes.
Say, anyone else?
Isn't there a rule or something that if you reverse a vote, can only be the person who?
It has to be somebody who voted in the majority can bring it back.
Can bring it back. So, we all voted in the majority. We all voted to do it, so they can, okay.
So, any other discussion from the public at this time? Seeing none. All those in favor? Against?
No.
Okay. We have three.
It's over with, Tammy.
We have three. It will be brought back to us once we get the counter.
What was the vote?
Once, three to two.
Three to two, no.
Once we get the counter count, then it will be brought back to us for further discussion. But we need the count. We need the, okay.
I have a video that I took yesterday on Sunday on our road, or close to about thirty minutes, and I can produce that to you guys.
That would be wonderful.
It shows none of them obeyed by this.
If you would send that to us, that would help as well. But Chance, when do you think this can be brought back to us? How long do you take a count? A week, two weeks? At our next meeting up here, perhaps?
A proper count should be taken over three days, but I'd like to do it over two weeks.
Okay. So, our next meeting here, which will be June the... It's a Monday, June? Twenty-seventh. Okay. June the twenty-seventh. We will, we're not meeting on Tuesday. That's a Monday because we all have to leave for Tampa. So, can you have us correct information by then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I think that was a good suggestion that maybe you put some additional signs, hey, Alacoa Animal Rescue, that way.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I think that sign needs to help as well.
And a new alert sign there as well.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
And I don't wanna belabor the issue, but do we need a motion to direct staff to come up with some kind of policy, or we just?
I think, I think the motion included direction, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
It did. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. All right. Next, we have Ann Hague.
Okay. Can, let me have Ann Hague.
Ann Hague quickly, and then we'll take a few minutes break while we get ready for our planning issues.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. My name is Ann Hague. I am married to Herb Hague. He is a lifelong resident of Walton County, and I have been living here for eleven years. Today, I am here to help bring awareness to alienated parents, grandparents here in Walton County, as well as the state of Florida. Too many of us are afraid, for various reasons, to speak up and speak out. So, therefore, I am here today to speak to this board about this issue. The state of Florida, Representative Brad Drake proclaimed June fourteenth, twenty sixteen, as Grandparent Alienation Awareness Day on February the twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen. And I am here today to ask my county, Walton County, to do the same by the way of a resolution. I am part of a group known as Grandparents Rights Advocates National Delegation of the USA, which we call it GRAND. And we are actively trying to get this recognized in all fifty states. I was fortunate enough to be the delegate for the state of Florida, and I am nervous and scared to death and emotional, so forgive me.
Getting close to lunch, but we haven't eaten anybody in a long time.
Oh, thank goodness. We know one of the biggest ways to defeat parent, grandparent alienation is to bring more awareness to those who know nothing or very little about alienation. With awareness comes education and understanding and the power to stop the abuse of innocent children and the elderly left in alienation from the people they love. No one, not a one of us, is immune from this. It could happen to any of us. Laws must be changed as well to protect the rights of these alienated children and grandchildren to see all their family members, even little cousins, best friends. Now, I will read the resolution. Whereas strong family relationships constitute the foundation of our communities, and we believe that the children and families of Florida deserve this day designated to create awareness and education for this little-known and severe form of abuse. And whereas alienation behaviors are frequently present in high-conflict divorces, separations, asymmetrical custody arrangements, and in intact marriages, often causing mental and emotional anguish to children. And whereas alienation is a term used to describe any number of behaviors and attitudes on the part of one or both parents designed to interfere, damage, or destroy the relationship between a child and family member. It is a form of abuse that causes emotional trauma to children. And whereas alienation takes advantage of the innocent and impressionable, as well as the suggestibility and dependency of a child depriving children of their right to love and be loved by extended family. And whereas mental health professionals agree that the negative effects of alienation can follow a child into adulthood with tragic consequences. And whereas the recently published Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders made several references to the dysfunctional family dynamic of alienation to be a form of psychological child abuse. And whereas Grandparent Alienation Awareness Day is intended to increase the knowledge and understanding of this problem to help families, institutions, the legal and mental health community, and leaders to better identify and combat such abusive behavior toward Florida's most vulnerable populations, the children and elderly. And then it goes on. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners does hereby, but we'll have to wait upon that. I will leave a legacy of love, whether I can be there or not. My story is the key that can unlock someone else's prison. I don't know how my story will end, but nowhere in my text will it read, "I ever gave up." Because, you see, I got it, which is my grandson's favorite saying. I also have my pictures and candles back there that's going to stay lit. But anyway, I thank you for your consideration, and I hope and pray to God that no one in this room ever has to go through this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions?
Do we have any questions for Ms. Hague? Does anyone wanna take action at this time?
We could adopt the resolution. Yeah, let's adopt, I move that we adopt the resolution.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion among the board? Anyone in the audience like to speak to this issue? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. It is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we'll move on to other public comments. Keep in mind, you have three minutes. Mr. Bagby, we know how to spell your name, so you just come right on up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jim Bagby, interim CEO and president of the Walton Area Chamber. Wanted to update you on a couple of things. The truck raffle winner, probably one of the two most poignant human interest stories that I have, I've seen in the fifteen years I've been in Walton County. The winner was Glenda Penton, who's retiring, I think, at the end of this month from the Supervisor of Elections Office. And it kinda brings your opening remarks, Madam Chair, full circle, because she was the mother of Sergeant Paget and her other son. And to know that that truck went to somebody who had given a lot, both to this country and to this county, was really just, just a very moving moment. She actually decided to keep the truck. We all thought she would take the twenty-five thousand dollar credit and buy her a nice little car or something and, you know, travel around, but she actually kept the truck. She actually paid for an additional trailer hitch, because she's gonna go get a boat, and she's gonna hook it to that truck, and she's gonna go fishing. So, that, that was a good thing. Couple of events coming up. Remind you, you're all invited to the Leadership Walton graduation Thursday evening, the Bayview Room at five-thirty PM in Sandestine. The guest speaker will be Senator Don Gates, and we will, along, I think Jay mentioned Christina. We'll have our eight future leaders of Walton County graduating then. We have the Power of Networking Luncheon, June first, at eleven-thirty at Tribeca, which is down in Redfish Village at the intersection of eighty-three and thirty-eight. Then we have the First Friday Breakfast up here, and it will be at the Walton County Emergency Management Center, formerly known as the Bunker. And our guest speaker at that will be Brian Kuhn, who is the Florida, or the director of the Florida Department of Emergency Management. So, we're really looking forward to him as we kick off our season emergency preparation. And finally, the Leadership Walton Class Project, the Barn Bash, on June eleventh, will be at Arnett's, and it will be from four to nine PM. And they are collecting money, all the money that you donate to that or buy tickets for will go to benefit the Ark of Walton County, which is the Leadership Walton's class project. Subject to your questions, that's all we have.
What was the date on that last event, the Barn Bash?
June eleventh, Commissioner.
Great. Thank you for the question. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Fletcher.
I'll be very brief. Fletcher, F-L-E-T-C-H-E-R. By the way, I sold Glenda her ticket for that truck, so she owes me. I wanted to piggyback on the red-nosed day. I mean, it looks kinda silly, but it's a very serious subject. And as I think most of you know, I belong to the Quanis Club of Freeport-South Walton. In fact, several of you have helped me support it. And we have one in the Funniac Springs. I just wanna encourage people, that's, that's what we cater to, these underprivileged kids. Twenty-eight percent of the kids in this county live in poverty, folks. So, think about your Quanis Club up here and the one in Freeport-South Walton, and try to support us and help these kids.
And also, thank you for the flags. When you go across the bridge at Memorial Day of Fourth of July, I know you're a big part of that, so thank you very much.
Well, that's another commercial. We, in South Walton, we put out these flags on the roadways, and we charge thirty-six dollars a year. If you got a neighborhood with ten people, we'll come out and do it in the neighborhood, and it is quite a sight. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any, anyone else? Anyone else from the board? We're gonna take a ten-minute break to give us time to switch over, and... Mr. Dice.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The first item we have is a request to add three full-time equivalent positions, two engineers and one development order inspector. Right now, that, those jobs are being outsourced to a private consulting firm, and we're borrowing a DO inspector from Public Works, Mr. Tommy Hinoat. Tommy's very busy with their, their activities, and so we've been stretching him, helping us. We feel like it's, the time has come to where we need to look, probably bring this back inside the county's organization and adding our own development order inspector. And with that, Mac and I were working up the worksheet, trying to make this as budget-neutral as possible for these positions. I'll ask Mac to come up and give you the particulars on these, on these positions.
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. In your package, we provided a spreadsheet that shows you what our estimated cost, including the overhead for these three new full-time equivalents are. And we're proposing some additional fees to pay for it. And if you look favorably upon this request, we can bring a fee resolution with proposed new fees back at the next BCC meeting. But we've essentially figured out how to pay for them based on bringing our engineering consultant effort that we outsourced several years ago when the economy tanked, bringing that effort back in-house and recapturing those existing fees that we're collecting at the DO application stage. Using that money, supplemented with some new fees that address the new stormwater requirements the BCC recently approved in Chapter Five of the Land Development Code for single-family permitting. We think we can cover the cost of this, operate much more efficiently, and provide better service to the public.
In today's request to simply to approve the FTEs, we'll move it forward, and we'll, if you wish, we'll bring back the changes to the fee proposal. But one thing Mac did touch on, just to be sure we're clear, because we've had, I know we've had some conversation with some of you on the new stormwater requirements that are requiring some decisions made by engineering that's getting kinda floating back through planning. This will give us a much cleaner process to get those reviewed by the individual that can say, yes, it works, and let's go.
And move them out faster.
Correct.
Have we also considered adding additional planners too? I mean, we're getting hit quite heavy with a lot of these plans coming in.
We've had some conversation, at least as far as next year's budget. As those conversations continue, we may bring those back sooner. Though we certainly are looking at some in the next budget year. Is that fair assessment, Wayne?
Correct. And in the current proposal, we are looking, I believe, at adding one senior planner and one, one regular planner. Senior planners do most of the development order, I mean, reviews for major projects. The planners take a lot of the walk-ins and answer a lot of the questions, and the general planning.
You certainly wouldn't hurt our feelings if you were inclined to give some indication that we might can press forward those.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
I mean, there's been a terrific uptick in the last couple of years in the number of items submitted, and know that they get subject to the criticism about it takes forever, and they're doing as best they can. So, if we had more people, possibly just smooth this out?
Let me revise this request. In addition to those engineering and development order, we would request that you approve and authorize us to move forward with adding a senior planner and a planning tech?
Yes, a planner.
And a planner.
Second.
Well, if I could.
I know, I know he's got this placard on his desk that calls him Commissioner Jones, but I will make that motion. I will make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Our staff can't do the work they're doing now in the matrix work.
No, you're right.
So we have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion among the board? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I think we are truly appreciative of that, you know.
Kind of went too smooth.
Just maybe I'm nervous about that, I'm kind of concerned, but, you know.
One, thank you.
Yeah.
And Commissioner, you know, one of the things that we do is, we have a lot of our staff who are at the meetings, and they're at meetings on Tuesday nights, they're in meetings on Thursday nights, and so it's a way that we can sort of help share the load. So I think we're very appreciative of that. Let me make one comment about the time of permitting. We get a lot of, I know you get a lot of comments about that, especially for built-for-homes and things like that. The county has a very complex code, it's got a lot of things built in there for protection and trying to enhance the character of the county, and those, to do that job, it's very tedious and very difficult, and our guys do a, our employees do a great job with that. However, because there are these little nuances you have to look at, it does take a little longer than what you would expect in a neighboring county. I know we've, I've had this discussion before with several of the people who come in the office, but it does take a little time. I think the result, it shows, when you look around and see the quality of development we have, but it does take a little bit longer. We can't, there are things we can do to expedite that. I think what we've done today, I'm very appreciative of, I think that will also help expedite that as well. But it's, we're not going to be able to be on the same plane as maybe an Oakliss County or a San Rosa County, just because our regulations are very different, very tailored to certain areas of the county, so. But we will do our dead-level best to make sure that those are done as expeditiously as we can and as thoroughly as we can without missing anything, because when we miss something, we hear about it. And it's usually a difficult thing to go through when you've got a house under construction, and all of a sudden, something's been missed. So again, I appreciate all the effort with that, and we'll get those positions out and filled as quickly as possible. And we'll get a modular in place so we can move people out and move people in, so. The next item we have, Madam Chairman, is a request to approve the revised scope of work for the RFP, for the Planning Department software. As you may recall, we issued one, our, the bids we got in were over budget. We have revised it a little bit to take out some of the requirements to be consistent with the current Navilon system. I think that may have been a little barrier for some people, and we feel like that with that being removed, we'll have a better pool of submissions for that. Also, we have reached out to our neighboring counties and neighboring cities to see what they're using. And so we have a list that we'll also provide, hopefully, to Glendale, that we can maybe reach out to them and tell them we do have this out there for them to look at, because some of the feedback we've gotten from some of our neighboring counties is they have software that works very well. And so we want to definitely try to see what they use, and if we can get that at a reasonable rate, I think we'll be delighted with that. This will also help our process in analyzing times and putting more, you know, having a little more steady view of what it's taking, where our problems are occurring with these permitting situations.
Well, does their, do you know if their software, say, for example, interfaces with the Building Department, or Public Works, or the Finance Department? I mean, I don't want to be a penny wise and pound foolish.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't want to spend any more money than we have to, but this is something that we have discussed for a long time getting right.
The, I believe Finance and the Building Department, they all use Navilon software. It's my understanding that that software may be going out and having a new software implemented over the next year or two, and so I think with that being removed, and what I'm hearing nowadays is anything new you would get would be, would most likely interface very well with any new software, the way software works these days. I'm not a software designer, my brother is, I'm not, unfortunately. I'm a planner. Took that wrong course at Alabama, but I think anything we get new would interface with anything that we may be getting here, other than Navilon, so.
Okay, good.
So we're asking for, to release the RFP for, to go out again for the software.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, second, any discussion? Seeing none, anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The third item we have is a request to approve the negotiated fees and the scope of work for the Matrix Design Group. We had this at our last meeting. This was continued, as you may recall, the first proposal we received back from Matrix was significantly higher. We negotiated with them to get it down to a point where we think it's more doable for us. As Commissioner Commander mentioned, the current proposal does require us to do more work on the staff side of things. In reading the revised proposal, a lot of the, bringing it forward to this board and going through the proposal process and the adoption process, they are going to leave to us to do that, and they will not be a part of that. That's where you see most of the changes. It's where they are just providing us information, and we're taking that, developing that into a staff report, and bringing it through the process with the Board of County Commissioners and also the states. That's most of where the changes that I have noticed have occurred. And again, this was continued from the last meeting. We're looking for direction from the board on how to proceed with the Matrix Design Group.
And how much time do you think of staff's time that is going to take up?
Until we see exactly what they're going to show, what they're going to show us, it's really hard to say that. I would tell you that it would probably take up, when you're talking about preparing items, dealing with the public on those items, and advertising those items, you're probably, my guess would be a half or three-quarters of an FTE for a year and a half is my best guess.
Not interrupt, I'm sorry. I did have some conversation with council regarding if we get this thing moving and we see that's becoming more than what we planned for, we can go back and recapture some of those services with Matrix. They were in the RFQ, they were in their proposal, and we've negotiated a fee based on less than that full proposal, but, and correct me if I'm...
Quell of a phasing project.
So the opportunity to come back and say, look, this part has taken us a lot longer, or we're not prepared to get there, this is what their fee is going to be to add that back to the project. So that option is always there as well.
And Madam Chairman, a lot of these things, the issues that are in the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan, staff is aware of those, and staff will be working with them very closely. If you notice in the proposal, they have a lot of meetings with staff and joint meetings with the Planning Commission, the Board of County Commissioners, Design Review Board, so forth. And so we'll already have close contact with them on some of these issues, anyway. So that makes a difference, I think, would be...
Wayne, who do you think, let's see, on here, it says Engineering Services, but it's really not Engineering Services, but...
Actually, Commissioner, that was our fault. We meant to change it to Consulting Services and just...
Yeah, yeah, because I noticed that, and I thought, I just had a question, a couple of questions, Wayne, having them marked here, let me see. One of them is, who do you think the project manager for the county is going to be? Would it be you, or...
In the scope of work, it defines me as a project manager. Quite frankly, I would probably need somebody to help me with that, because my days filled pretty much doing other things as well. And so we would probably share that responsibility with another staff member.
Okay, so, and then...
But the scope defines me as, in their scope of work, it defines me as a project manager.
Okay, okay. And then, if you could just explain, on page one, under Scope Assumptions, one, two, three, four, five, five little, the fifth little square and the sixth little square, I just didn't understand the way that was worded.
And Commissioner, the way I understand that is, is that basically, they're going to identify, I think the last part of that, only a review and identification of how and where revisions are required. And when I, as I read that, that's my understanding, is that they're going to identify the issues, they're going to do a strike-through underline format, and then hand it to us.
Okay.
For us to go and take, that's my, that's how I read that section.
They get to the next level?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, only a review and identification of how and where, only a review and identification of how and where revisions are required.
But if you read further into the scope, they talk about providing us underline, you know, strike-underline versions of their proposals, and so my assumption with that is, is that, again, they would give that to us, we would take that forward, and again, put it to the proper process.
And then, and then it also says, "And review for consistency with Florida statutes does not include proposed language to make the comprehensive plan consistent."
Which, what's bullet point are you on, Commissioner?
I'm still on the same bullet point. I just, the way it was worded kind of sounded like, that was, I didn't understand it.
Well, I understand why they wouldn't propose the current...
The comprehensive plan consistency requirements per the RFQ scope, both the identification of unnecessary, redundant, inconsistent policies and review for consistency with Florida statutes does not include proposed language to make the comp plan consistent, only a review and identification of how and where revisions are required. What does that mean?
Yeah, and it does sound a little bit strange. If you look at page four on the scope on 4.3, it says, "Matrix will review the comprehensive plan for consistency with Florida statutes, including the current sections of 163, 3178," which incorporate provisions, and it looks like there, they're saying they are going to review that, and they are going to analyze that. So that may be a little, a little bit inconsistent with their sort of assumptions in the scope.
Yeah, yeah, because...
I would, Commissioner, just looking at it, and apologize for not looking at it earlier, but I think I, the part you just pointed out at page one, "Does not include proposed language to make the comprehensive plan consistent," does seem to be inconsistent with 4.3, so I think I would strike that sentence, or that portion of that sentence. Or actually, after it hits Florida statutes, put a period and strike the remainder of the sentence. Because that does seem to be inconsistent with 4.3.
Yeah, it just kind of sounds like that might be kind of a caveat, like, well, we never said it was going to be consistent, here it is right here.
That's one of our...
Isn't that what we asked them to do?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely want it to be consistent, because we don't want to, what would be the point?
Mark, just, I mean, if the board chose to say, you know, we want to go to number two, how would that work? Would that, I mean, I'm not saying we would, that the board would decide that, but what are our options as far as this goes?
Has task order, they'd have to vote on it and get them to...
If we want to go back and, if there's questions here, we can go back to Matrix and have those further define exactly what their issues are to come back.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and then how are they going to take public input? Is it going to be just at these meetings where people will come out and...
And Commissioner, that's a great question. I was looking last, through this last night, and I was looking for that, and what you see, there's a lot of joint kickoff meetings between staff and Matrix, Matrix and the Planning Commission, Matrix and Design Review Board, Matrix and the Board, but the public comment section and the workshops are not included. That's as far as I can tell, I didn't see anything in there with that.
Okay, okay, because see, that's going to be a huge part.
And my assumption with that is, is that would be up to staff to hold the workshops.
Oh, really?
Now, in my, in my previous experiences with things like this, when staff is presenting things, I've always felt like it's nice to have a third party to present those things. And that's my professional opinion, because people associate things, I mean, people have dealt with this before, and to me, having a third party present those is always, it shows more independence, that they are presenting what they believe to be the best route for the county. When staff gets involved, that people have these, some of these assumptions, sometimes we're trying to do things that fit our needs, not necessarily what an independent third-party consultant is saying.
Right, right, yeah.
Well, shouldn't we find out how many public workshops are going to have?
I think we need guidance on that, because I think, you know, we don't want to get to the end of this and then have a public meeting, and everybody go, no, no, we, no, no. And so there needs to be some kind of...
So is it a fair assessment, and Commissioner, I'm not sure through your comments, but we've got concern of whether they will propose language that is consistent with Florida statutes when they find the current language is inconsistent, and that they participate in at least a certain number of public workshops for input. We can certainly go back and get those answered questions answered.
And I bet they, I bet that's where they cut their, a lot of their cost, because those public workshops take a lot of time, preparation...
And travel cost.
Travel cost, and then having the meeting, and then following up with that, and then producing, so that's what they took out, right?
I think they didn't, that's not $300,000.
No.
So I think if that's what we wanted to add, add that back to their proposal, we can certainly get a cost for that specifically.
Right. And I'd be glad to communicate with Sal today and have them aware of this and...
I think we need, yeah, I think we need their input on, at what stage do you begin to take public comments? Is it from the very get-go? Is it from, you know, you have a draft and you take public comments, or, I mean, how does the public intersperse throughout this process? And, you know, will everything be posted online, you know, like everybody wants to see what the draft is, and then draft number two, and then draft number, you know, and we had a, didn't we have a separate link that would, on some other things that people could link on to?
I think in their first proposal, I think they may have taken out this one, one of the things they had was a website that they would...
Oh, and they took it out?
I think they took this, I didn't see it in here.
Definitely, you should go back in.
Yeah, and so the website was a place to communicate the changes, the drafts, the meetings.
Otherwise, well, they're going to be calling us, and we're going to be trying to call y'all, and then, so I think we, I think we need a website with an interactive website where people can...
Now, the proposal still includes the zoning analysis and the land use plan, the zoning analysis with the hybrid, mixed-use districts and those kind of things, that's still in there, too, as well.
Okay, good.
I think that's phase three of their project.
And that's good, I think we need them to tell us how they can intersperse the public, and then a website with, with somebody, Matt, somebody on there, on the website, looking at it.
There, but appropriate, I mean, how many public meetings would the board prefer? I mean, because sometimes you can get bogged down in so many public meetings that you don't go anywhere, and there's...
I think Commissioner Meadows might have been on point, at what points will we have public meetings? Once this...
What is their suggestion, recommendation, as to, as to what point does the public become involved? If it's from the get-go, then, you know, you're going to need, you know, a lot. If it's just at the draft period and then another, it may be five or six, or I don't know.
I mean, to me, I think to have a public meeting when you first start is wise, because you do sort of a issue identification and some things like that, it's a very initial one. But we'll communicate that, to that, to them, and have them, let us know what their suggestions are, if that works.
Okay. So I suppose the next question, or do we want, the longer we wait to approve, the longer it takes to get started?
I think we approve this one and then ask them to...
As for the, as, with the understanding, we intend to amend to include some of those other items? Okay, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
That's my, that's my motion, I think.
With the, with the language...
Unless somebody else has made, already made a motion, I can't remember.
With the, with the strikeout language on page one?
Yeah, strikeout language on page one, approve it as it is, and ask them for these add-ons.
Yeah, and be specific.
Yeah.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion among the board? Anyone in the audience seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate that. Next item we have is the resignation of Gerald Burwell from the Design Review Board. He's asked for his letter to be, his name to be accepted for resignation, and so we'll have a vacancy on that board.
So how do we fill those vacancies?
I think he was just assistant at large, if I'm not mistaken.
No, he was a design professional.
Is he?
Yeah, he's a design professional, so it's got to be a design professional, so can somebody bring the applications to us, or at least let us know who's applying?
We will post on the website that there is a position available and ask for...
Design professional.
Right.
Yeah.
But apparently, he wants us to accept his resignation.
Yes, he would like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So I have a motion for that. I have a motion, I have a second.
Second, let me ask you another question. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Let me, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Commissioner Meadows.
Yeah, on the local Restore Committee, Sarah Bowers is on there.
Yeah. She represents the City of Defuniac.
It says Community Leader, it says Community Leader.
Okay.
Did she resign from...
Not to my knowledge.
I have not seen anything from her.
Okay, so I'll find out, though.
She resigned from the city.
The city manager, but...
Yeah, so wouldn't that mean that, I don't know, I was just asking.
Look into that, I'm not sure if she was appointed by the city, or we'll check that out and...
I think, I think it was, I think we wanted to have, yeah, yeah, she just...
I think she was a representative. Yeah, I think she was, too.
She was, she was. I just wanted to point that out, and then um...
Well, you...
Can you make a note on your, put your hat on?
To bring back a recommendation from the city?
And then I also noticed on the zoning board of adjustment, Art Miller is on that, so if he's, if he, he's moving out of town.
Yeah, I, I understand we have not received a...
To my knowledge, we have not received a resignation letter. I will tell you that the zoning board of adjustments, it's very important, because it takes a supermajority to approve or deny things, and so without one person being there, it causes a kink.
And we have a meeting Thursday night.
And he's at, he's an at-large member, so I think somebody should reach out to him and ask him what, what, what that is. Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Um, if it, if it's okay, I'll have one of our folks call him and just...
Yeah, that, that, yeah, just, just find out, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And then if, if, if that, it's an at-large seat, so just get some more, get the applications and let us look at those. If you would.
Chairman, the fifth item on our agenda is a selection of a transportation planning consultant for the RFQ. We had one submitted for this, and if you, just if you recall, this is where the rewrite of the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, and also analyzing the, the impact fee study as opposed to doing prop fair share. And Max, here are a few more questions for that.
So, this is not part of the Matrix scope?
Now, this was excluded from the Matrix assignment.
Okay.
Uh, and it will be complimentary.
How much do you think it's going to cost? Do we have any idea?
Well, we have seventy-five thousand dollars in the budget.
Okay.
Probably close to it, huh?
We're hoping that's how much it'll cost.
Now that they're watching the video, that's...
Yeah, yeah, now that, yeah, I...
All right. Do I need a motion on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, I need a motion, second.
Second.
Second, all right. Motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
The next three items are legislative items, and the first one is a request to adopt the fish pond ordinance in the Land of Umpet Code. As you may recall, this has gone through the comprehensive plan. Now, this is the part of the Land of Umpet Code where we get that straight. At the last meeting, there were some questions, and I was hoping Scott Kerway would, could come and answer those for us. Scott is here this morning, and I think Scott was, had a hand in drafting this, this proposed ordinance. So if I can, I'll ask him to come forward and kind of give the board a, a brief overview of what the changes were.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Scott Kerway, Walton County Public Works, C.A.R.A.W.A.Y. I understand there was some questions about the size of the pond. The size in the pond language in this draft ordinance is taken from the Florida statutes in water management, the exempt criteria. So, that is where the sizing is proposed from. We can certainly make it any size we want.
Excuse me, if we change the size, does that mean we start the process over?
Only, actually, excuse me, it's only if we increase it, if we go below what, what has been proposed and been adopted, or been accepted by the DEO, we're okay.
Well, I know one time, when we originally started this, we talked about five acres. And, and somehow, I understand, it got to fifteen acres. And I do understand the value of being able to sell your dirt if you're on a road project. But fifteen-acre pond, it's not a pond, it's a lake, and I am concerned that people are not going to reclaim. There are good people in this world that are going to reclaim, you know, but just because we say we're going to make them, you know, we're not... Sometimes things get through the cracks. I don't know, I am more comfortable, and I'm just one with five acres. And somehow, the word got out, because I had some visitors that I wanted a one-acre pond. I am not that stupid. A one-acre pond would, would barely hold water.
She wants a two-acre pond, no.
But I did, I want a two-acre pond. No, I, I think five for a normal fish pond, because I used to own one, is, is a good size, but that's just my opinion.
Let me ask you this. Is, is it fifteen acres, i- is it per tract, per parcel, per...
Uh, we, we didn't specify that in the language. To give you a little background, back in April 28th of 2015, we brought, i.e., draft mining ordinance.
I remember, yeah.
And that draft mining ordinance was going to do two things. It was going to allow dry-up and borrow pits less than five acres, and then it was going to allow farm ponds, and allow the people who construct a farm pond to sell or give away the excess material.
Right.
So that, the five acres came from that, that proposed dry-up and borrow pit back in April of 2015. At that meeting, the board decided they, there was going to be no changes to the mining ordinance, and they directed staff to come up with proposed ordinance change to allow farm pond construction only in large-scale and general ag land uses. So, there really was, there really was never a criteria set on the size of a proposed pond construction. That's where we went to, looked at the state's rules and Florida statutes, and that's where we come up with fifteen acres and fifteen-foot. But certainly, a five-acre pond, if, if that's what the board chooses.
Well, and it says, it says on the site, so let's say I have a hundred acres, and I've decided this is one site, and that's another site. Can I have more than one pond?
You could, as the ordinance is written. Now, I will, I, I will say...
A bunch of ponds.
I, I will say there is a, there is a permit, a draft permit application that, that county, that staff has drafted. There's also a procedural process that the staff has put in place. It will go through an application process, peer review process, and you go to the TRC to, to get the permit. So, it will go under staff review. It's not just coming into and saying, hey, I want to build.
Do I have a fee?
Uh, right now, there is a hundred-dollar fee proposed.
Okay, okay.
I thought I heard something.
But if I had a hundred acres, but if I has a hundred acres, I could build as many ponds as I wanted to. So I could basically turn it into a mining operation, basically.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
The last time we considered this, I thought the points that you made were part of our consensus, was that it was going to be a five acre and, and a limitation on this multiple five-acre ponds on a parcel, and I...
I thought it was five acres.
I thought we had come to that...
For forty, over forty acres, yeah.
The, the five acre per forty rule was strictly for the dry-up and borrow pits. That was the, that was the language in the April twenty-fifth, twenty-eighth.
You can certainly, you can apply it to this.
We can, we can certainly apply that, yes.
But we discussed this, I think we deferred, because we had a Commission Member missing, and I thought we came to a conclusion, or at least a, a consensus at that point, that we wanted to go to a five-acre definition, and the fact that there'd be some kind of limitation, they, they just couldn't put a whole bunch of five-acre ponds on there.
One more question before Bill, because Bill's...
Because Bill's chomping at the pit here. And I'm not going to ignore it.
If it's, if it's five acres, and, and if it's fifteen acres, it's average depth of less than fifteen feet. I'm assuming that was fifteen, fifteen was in there for a reason. If it was five acres, what would the depth be?
Uh, we could leave the depth at fifteen foot. Really, ponds are, there's really not a blanket rule that says this is how you build a pond, because they're all, they're all kind of unique. A lot of it depends on the, the soil tech, the soil, the water table, the slope.
You can go down fifteen feet, but okay.
And sometimes you need that depth to penetrate the water table to actually fill up the pond, or you're going to have just a dry hole there,
Okay.
which we don't want.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Mr. Chapman?
Well, I, I know everybody in this room knows this is one of the things that I was advocating for, a change in there. Originally, the discussion, and what I was trying to see is the restriction that we put on the landowner as far as being able to sell or give away any excess dirt he may have. Now, I know this is written in here as fifteen acres. A five-acre pond, if you, if they actually build it according to the three-to-one slope and all that, you don't really have five acres of a pond. Fifteen acres, you've got to have subsan, substantial property available to put that in there to meet the regulations of the slopes and all that other stuff that's required. So, I'm, you know, hammering in on this fifteen acres, but that's not going to probably be applicable to a lot of people that's got acreage. If I read this as it stands right now, I have thirty acres now that are in ten-acre things. I obviously can't put a fifteen-acre pond on a ten-acre spot. However, I could go put a five-acre pond on all three tens.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, you know, I'm concerned about us getting the proper grade on it. Five acres is probably going to be the average, I would think, unless you've got a large parcel of, of land, two hundred acres or more, or a hundred acres. Fifteen acres on a hundred acre is, that still leaves you eighty-five acres out there that's cleared. So, I would just say we might as well stick with this, and especially as far as removing the restriction of taking the dirt and being able to do with whatever you want with it.
I think, I think the idea was that, you know, people wanted to dig a little pond, and they wanted to be able to sell their dirt. But the, the idea was not to have all these miniature ponds out there with a lot of dirt selling, a lot of trucks going up and down the roads that weren't really designed for industrial-type, type things. So, that's my issue with it, is the big, the bigger the, bigger the pond is, more dirt comes out, more truckloads you've got. So now you're kind of in a dirt operation, in my opinion. And, and that's where I came in, where, you know, you're, you're on a farm, and you've got, now you've got thirty dump trucks coming in and out all day long, because you've got huge ponds. So that was my take on the fifteen, but...
Well, and to answer that, I, I think that's one of the reasons the county has drafted a application process and is going to go through a permit process. Prior to that, if you wanted to build a farm pond in Walton County, as long as you got, met the state rules, you, you didn't even have to come to the county to get a permit.
Well, if I'm correct on that, now, if I wanted to right now, and all those three acre, three tens that I got, I can, they're uplands, so I could just go out there and dig a hole if I wanted to.
Got to keep the dirt on site.
Because I'd keep the dirt right there on site.
Right.
But if I want to give it to my neighbor, I ain't planning on starting a, a borrow pit. But if I wanted, my neighbor down the road's got a big sinkhole or something, he needs the dirt, I ought to be able to give it to him without having to...
Well, and yeah, but you're, you're probably going to, yeah, you're probably, but there will be a lot of people who will think,
I'm sure we got those scrupulous peoples everywhere.
I'm going in the dirt business, and this allows them to go into the dirt business.
One of the, one of the other components of the earlier consideration, when we were looking at just the five-acre borrow pits, was a percentage of the parcel. For instance, if you've got three ten-acre parcels, and at that point, would have said, you know, we were looking at five acres per forty, so you could build one on each of your ten acres, but it has to be in proportion to five to forty, whatever that number is. But if you had eighty acres, you could do two five-acre ones. So that, that allowed some ability for the larger, the landmass, the larger...
Well, I just want us to keep in mind, if you will, that these large ag and general, large-scale ag and general ag, if there are people out there that are farming that land or doing ranching, whether you ought to have the latitude to make sure that they can take care of their stock, or whatever the case may be, if they're using a pond to irrigate their, their crops. And we just don't want it so kind of big and restrictive on them that it, it's cost prohibitive for them to do it. And one thing, I think several people came to our board meetings in the past, you know, I don't have the money to build a pond, but I have a guy that will build a pond for the dirt. And we want to give them that latitude, I would hope.
And, and I certainly agree with that, you know. In, in the spirit of compromise, instead of five acres, instead of fifteen acres, what about seven?
Seven per forty-acre tract? Seven per forty acres?
Seven or eight?
Per forty.
Seven, seven per forty, yeah. Because remember, you're gonna, you're going to be, you know, you're going to have seven acres fifteen feet deep, you're gonna, that's a lot of truckloads of dirt. And the main thing is, you, you're going to have trucks hauling up and down the road, which is, which we're going to get complaints for, and that's the problem. I mean, if you want to dig a hole and sell your dirt to your neighbor, I don't think anybody cares. But I think it's the hauling of this dirt up and down and to the road projects and all that that, that I was thinking about, because it will impact neighborhoods if you have...
Well, there's another consideration you might want to keep in mind. And that is, as much as I know we have, like Mr. Perry out there, that's went through a large process, a long and expensive process to become a borrow pit for the dirt. But there could be somebody that may want a pond, and then AC or CW or somebody come to him and say, we could use that dirt from that, that ten acres, or seven and a half for that matter, to help defray some of the cost on that construction project, because everybody knows it costs a lot money, a lot of money, to pull it from point A to point B. So, if we make it too small, then we may not get the benefit of a possible savings with the DOT or to the county if we're having to redo a, a road, and there's that availability that's right next to the job site. So, whatever the board wishes, as long as we keep this selling and giving away where it ain't prohibitive.
And I'm, I'm fine with that. I really am, I'm fine with that.
I'll make a motion that we go with five acres, fifteen feet deep, five per forty acres with the ability to, to sell.
Second, Chairman.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, yes, sir.
Five per forty acres.
You don't get five.
Huh?
You only got thirty acres, right?
Yeah, I got thirty, but there's three individual parcels. So you just cut me out of building a pond on the backside for my cows.
No, you've got thirty acres, so it's...
That's right.
Three different parcels.
So you can put in a pond, five-acre pond.
I'm just using me as an example.
Yeah, just one pond. But, you know, if you had forty acres, if you had, if you had eighty acres, you could put in two ponds. But it's up to forty acres. I mean, are we writing this for one person, or are we writing it for...
No, I'm writing it, yeah, you could say you could be writing it for me, too, because it does affect me, but there's hundreds of other people out there that it's going to affect, and that's, that's the reason I'm advocating for them, too, not just me.
And, and my memory might not serve me right, but I think we had this discussion way back, and we decided on this, and now we're, you know...
Going back to that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, I think we need to make decisions and stand and...
Well, I think, well, we just...
That's what I knew evidence.
We, we, we put traffic stop signs out there, and we just took them down, so if we're making...
We didn't take them on my boat.
If we're making, if we're, if we're not going to change positions on anything, then let's not change. I mean, I think I've come up with more information, that's why I've, I changed it to five, because fifteen, fifteen acres is a whole lot of, I forget how many thousands of square feet of dirt it is, but it's, it's a lot of dirt.
So what is your new information that we didn't have when we decided this a year ago?
That's what I'm saying. Fifteen acres is, is a large square footage of dirt.
And it was a year ago, it was the same large square?
Well, I was not here when y'all took this up last time and made it fifteen. I was absent at that meeting. Therefore, when it comes back, and I am here, I have the information that, and I call the question.
Oh, dear Lord.
Sorry, I don't know what's wrong with this.
I might shock me.
I called the question.
Yes, I have to have public comment first. Anyone in the public like to comment on this? Yes, sir.
Todd Burke, spelled B-U-R-K-E. On the issue of the cubic yards and how much material you're really dealing with here, a fifteen-acre pond at fifteen feet deep produces three-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand cubic yards of material. Okay? And then if you take an, an average dump truck, that's eighteen yards, goes into an average dump truck, that's twenty-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-six dump trucks full of material. And then if you want to take that and, and say, how long is it going to take to haul that out? If you do a five-day work week, fifty trucks per day, that's a year and a half to get all that material out of there.
And that's the new information that I had. I just couldn't remember the cube, the, the numbers. That, that's the new information that I have, and that's the hauling problem.
I'm certainly glad you came with our new information.
Yeah. And I, you know, I hadn't calculated it before, you know, I just, okay, big pond. I had not thought about how much dirt that, that was involved.
Yeah, and I think it's a, a valid point, that, and the whole point of this fish pond ordinance is be able to, you know, help thy neighbor or help thyself dig a pond. But you just got to be careful, because, you know, this all comes on the backdrop of years of borrow pits that didn't get refilled and all of that. Y'all have done a great job with your mining ordinance to solve that bad stuff, and you just don't want to create a loophole here where somebody is getting in and taking out three-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand cubic yards of material. That, by the way, at two hundred, I mean, at two dollars and seventy-five cents, two dollars and seventy-five cents per yard of that much material, that's nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand dollars worth of material that they could be selling, so. I mean, it's a mining operation, that's what it is, and you have a mining ordinance, they should go through that.
Okay. This might be for Scott. As part of our, I guess, enforcement process, is if somebody applies for this pond...
Yes, sir.
Do we go out there and make sure that once he's excavated all the dirt out, that he's got the slopes, he's reclaimed it, and it is actually filling up with water?
Yes, at the... Yes, at the September two thousand and fifteen meeting, Commissioner Commander requested that when we get this application process and permit process in place, that we inspect a pond after it's built and one year after completion. So, whenever this process is approved and the ordinance is passed, when the application and permit process is drafted, there will be an inspection after the pond is complete and one year after completion by staff.
And for council, in the event you go out there at the conclusion of removing the dirt, and they have not, and they refuse to reclaim it back or put the slopes or whatever, dress it up, what is the action available to the county to gain compliance?
There's a code enforcement action.
All right. So, if they are found in violation...
We can fine them for every day they don't correct the violation.
And at a point in time, we might own the property, huh?
It has happened before.
It has happened, yes.
And Scott, who's gonna put it on their calendar to go out in a year and check it? That's my, sometimes I know how things get through the cracks here, you know?
Well, since this is gonna be, go through the TRC and actually get a permit through the, through the county, it would go through the Development Order Inspector's process, so once they call for a completion inspection, then the Development Order would go out and do his first inspection. A year later, he would put it on his calendar and go up with a follow-up.
Well, the, we gotta make it as simple as we possibly can, 'cause if you don't, you go out there in the middle of the woods in Darlington or Mossy Head or anywhere else, and they're gonna build a deck on pond, and nobody's gonna know about it.
Well, and another thing is, in the permit process that we've got drafted right now, is we have a one-year permit. That's how long the duration of this, of this pond construction is for, one year. Not for someone to come in there, you know, the intent is really to allow somebody that truly wants to build a farm pond, whether it's for livestock, catfish operation, to truly build a farm pond. Now, we understand there's, there's certain individuals who may take, you know, take this situation for granted, and we hope they don't do that, but, you know, and that's the reason we've got the one-year permit process, where there's gonna be follow-up inspections, so hopefully, we can keep our fingers on the pulse of this.
Madam Chair, could I follow up with Mr. Davis's comment about ultimately, if they didn't follow the orders, they took them, it out and didn't reclaim it, and they came back to the county? Now, what's the, what's the responsibility or liability on the county to do the reclamation? Well, we, we could, we could give them an opportunity to cure, and if they don't cure, we, we could undertake, we need a corridor to do it, but we could undertake to do the cure ourselves. That would be part of, part of a corridor involving an injunction, a declaratory relief action. But if, if we got the property back, just like we did on Coyote landfill? We could do that, yes. Yes, sir. So, and there's no recourse there, is there? Well, frankly, ninety-nine percent of the time, people were not gonna let us get that far, they're going to do what's necessary to reclaim it.
'Cause if we reclaimed it because they didn't, we could find a lien against that piece of property.
We would be entitled to it.
And subsequently, but if there's no assets to seize, then we're...
And then we run into the, with the foreclosure issue, we do run into the homestead issue as well. Which I think, is that not one of the things we ran into in a lot of the previous code cases, is that there was no, no dollar valued property to become involved with? Or there was a mortgage or something along those lines, but...
All right, any other, is there any other comment from anybody? No one else? All those in favor of... Sir? I remember the motion, he said five acres, she...
My motion is, five acres, my motion is to change the wording to the fifteen to a five on the first part, the depth can be fifteen.
Okay.
Per forty acres.
Per forty acres, yeah, okay.
With the, any excess material can be sold or giveaway.
Correct, yes, yes. All right, is everybody clear and understanding?
Just, just one clear thing.
Oh, Lord.
Well, a forty acre parcel can get five acres. Does that mean, does a twenty acre parcel get five acres, or does it get...
Up to forty.
Up to forty.
One per forty or less.
Each forty acre parcel can have up to five acres.
Yep, yep, up to forty, yep.
All right.
What about a hundred forty? What about a hundred and forty acre parcel? What does it get?
Then he would have forty, forty, and forty?
He could, it would only get five, two.
No, no.
Get three.
No, he'd get three.
Three and a half.
He'd get three and a half, yeah, half pond. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
No. And we have one day for the motion carries.
Madam Chairman, the next item is a request to adopt, to adopt dogs and outdoor eating areas ordinance. I believe this is the final, final adoption rating for this one.
It is final adoption.
Yes.
Any comments, ladies and gentlemen? Any comments from the public? Shut up.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have a motion? So, do I have a second? Dog, somebody?
As much as I hate to have a dog in the restaurant where I'm eating, I'll second it.
And it's very short, but it just allows them if they want to, and we're not saying that they have to.
I know that, if they do, they ain't gonna see me.
And you don't have to go, yeah, you don't have to be there.
All right. Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passings, move on, ladies and gentlemen.
If a dog digs a hole to mine, does he... Never mind.
I was told to shut up.
If he digs five acres up down fifteen feet, does it count as a pond, or is it part of your dog?
It counts as a bad dog.